He's the head of the county road commission.
Ooh.
He's on the roads. But here's the other guy, Ben. Well, this is her, I think. Ah, I live in Talmadge. I believe. It's where he's from. Let's get this out and show them the road.
All right, we're going to call the meeting order.
You blame the hand.
All right, first, that's our number one. Our number two is civil reflection.
I don't think they know you've started.
I don't think they have either, but that's okay. I'll keep moving. Eventually, it's okay. You shouldn't talk to him anyway. I shouldn't have asked him. He doesn't listen to me. Good. Okay. Our number two, Mrs. Civil Reflections, we're going to do the pledge allegiance, and then we'll have a vote of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our number three item, and I do have amendments, and others have amendments, is the approval of agenda. You will call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, here. Mr. Wissler?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Funesless?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Mr. Amory-Dewitt, the actions. Thank you.
Now we will have approval of agenda, but I know that there are those who have amendments, so we'll start on your.
I'd like to add item D under 13 large A to discuss the marijuana ordinance, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, to get your feedback for the planning commission, please.
All right, and you said that was be as a boy or?
D.
D as in David?
Thirteen large A, small d.
So it's C, okay. Thank you. Joe, we need to vote on that.
Well, you have some amendments, right?
Yes.
So go ahead.
Oh, let's permane, then.
Pardon?
Let's permane.
What, the other?
The other ones.
Yeah, that's what I said, go ahead.
Yeah.
We're waiting for you to tell us what you want to amend the agenda.
I'm going to go next, okay. I want to remove the Public Arts Committee minutes because they didn't sign it.
Arts committee.
And we've already been in contact with them, and they're going to correct it and get anyone sent to us to bring to the next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
That understood? No, not it. I have items for action, thirteen large B, with a small b. And I wanted to be moved to thirteen A. Now you take the D, so it will be E.
What?
Well, I was going to have D, but you have D, so it will be E. So it's thirteen unfinished business. Because you have marijuana.
You.
I want to remove thirteen large B. See, there it is, you got the large B, small b. The Clinton County Broadband. I want to move it to thirteen unfinished business D. Well, actually, it's E, because you have D.
Is that because you don't want to take action tonight?
No, don't want to take action tonight. It needs to be discussed. And we also have fourteen B. I'm sorry, Joe, did that make sense? Got it?
I got it.
Okay. Fourteen A, B, to add for discussion. Okay, that would be, hang on, hang on. Fourteen B items for action. Your, for discussion, your thirteen, let's hang on here. Your fourteen C, D, E, and F, would like to have that moved to fourteen A. How confusing, isn't it?
No, my lord.
Thirteen A.
It's the B.
Is that because you don't want to take action on those ones tonight?
Not wanting to have, those items for action, to me, need to be discussed.
All right, how many of them?
So that would be C, D, E, and F. All right, are there any other changes? Do you, okay.
Ross, you support the change?
That's okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Need to vote?
Wait, what?
Okay.
Joe.
I thought Joe said he wasn't supporting it.
You're not going to support it.
Oh, I thought you said you were.
So there's no motion?
Oh, I thought you understood.
Oh, I didn't.
I support the last change.
The last change?
The last change would be the four items, C, D, E, and F, of fourteen B.
All right, I got you.
Those are items for action. And they're being adjourned. They're first reading, but we've never discussed them.
Can I ask a question? Who put them on there? Why didn't you talk to the superintendent before you got the vote?
Because they just cut this.
I've had my back, but it's probably.
You got any questions?
Not at all, I understand.
I have questions, I do it. No, this I don't understand.
I got them, I'll either ask you.
Will the discussion in the meeting be enough to get you your answers?
I hope so.
So could we still vote on them then?
I'll vote no, but no, but yeah.
I mean, if you get your answers, is, I guess I'm confused why we couldn't vote on them then.
If somebody, can we discuss it now or can we just move it for discussion?
It sounds like we're discussing it now.
Okay, you want to discuss it now?
I don't, I just don't want to vote no on your amendment. I'm trying to understand.
My issue with these have to do with the fact they have not been brought to our attention. There isn't any, I understand that Lyle has done this. I think that's okay for Lyle. But what she's asking, what's being asked here is that these be moved to a city ordinance. And my question has always been with this, how many of these do we have? In other words, how many orderings? How many assault batteries? How many?
I think those are really fair questions, but could we discuss it as part of the item and then still vote on it, once you get your answers?
And no, because when you say item for action, that automatically means that it's going to pass.
No.
Okay.
It can be defeated.
I have a question. What type of ordinance did you say this was?
I don't know what she's saying, the ordinance says that it's being set.
Did you, I thought I heard you say this makes them a city ordinance.
Well, she's moving these from.
Did you say it makes it a city?
City ordinance, yes, I did.
This isn't a city, Marie, this is Bath Charter Township. This is not a city.
That's correct.
A city gets 21 mils in taxes, and they can take by statute, they can have city ordinance. This Bath Charter Township cannot have that. This is the way business is done for a township government.
This township has ordinances.
That's good that you say that, because that's what it is.
Why, we have an ordinance officer.
It's not a city.
Okay.
These are, these are police ordinances.
Correct.
These are not code enforcement ordinances.
These will go into the ordinance. They're already a violation of the law. What you're, what you're saying is then it becomes a township. Correct.
Correct.
A township ordinance. So they write under an ordinance. They don't write under the state.
That's right, but they're police ordinances.
Yes, and that's my question with that. How many do we have?
You've been asked.
Why don't?
I think that's why, I think that's why the town is here. I think that's why.
I hope so.
I think it's why I'm saying.
That's why I want to discuss it, but hey, if you.
But we can still, I think you have good questions. We could still discuss it at that point, and you deserve the answers to your questions.
I want to move to items for discussion. There's no, I don't think that the roof's going to fly up if we don't ask it tonight.
I made a motion.
The motion was?
Not to support the changes, C, D, E, and F.
I support that.
So we're supporting the other three changes, though?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, we lost five. Okay, so we'll move that back so that we know what we're voting on first for the agenda.
We are adding the marijuana ordinance to thirteen large A, small d. We are removing the Public Arts Committee minutes, and we are.
Because they weren't signed.
Because they weren't signed.
Correct.
And then we are moving the Clinton County Broadband to thirteen large AE. She want, you want to have that for discussion and not an action item?
Let's take a minute. Now we can move to accept the agenda?
No, we got to vote on those.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Joe made the motion, Steve supported it. Mr. Wissler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funesless?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any disclosure for public interest? Seeing none. Public statement, one. Anybody? Okay. All right, we have item six. Now, this is from the county, state, federal, and other agencies. And under it's saying that Melissa, is it, that's an interesting way to spell that. It is, it's just an interesting, I had to ask for sure if I'm saying it correctly. I'd like to say.
It is Melissa Shutt.
Yeah, it's, it's just very striking. That's a good, good way to put it. For the Clinton County area, and of course, Gail Latkins, with the Road Committee.
I'll start.
I've added.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight, appreciate it. Ryan and I have talked about transit to some, some degree and spent quite a bit of time on it. And we have, the transit agency in this county has been completely over, over the last three, out of the last four or five years, turned over to more public service, more routes. We have more buses. We've been able to, with the approval of the voters of the county, we've been able to actually pay wages. We've raised the wages from $11 to $18 to start, which enables us actually to get people to apply, which was wonderful until we got into this calendar year. As we know, $18, money can buy you a cup of coffee hardly anymore. You know, if you gotta go flower by flowers, you might as well stay home. Let alone fill up your tank if you have. But we are paying $18. We are getting people to, to sign up. We train. We're always seeking for younger people that perhaps would like to make a career of that if they could. And in that vein, we also are in discussions with CADA and E-Trans and the Greater Lansing area for the regional, to enhance regional transit. So there's a number of things going on, and we're really interested in expanding our service in this corner of the township as well as we identify needs or needs are brought to us, recommendations. We certainly take those under consideration and will help as much as we can, as quickly as we can. Melissa was appointed to the executive director three years ago, and she's taken very competent command of our, of our organization. She's also on the board of the statewide Public Transportation Association. And so we're, we're getting more input and better input in the way we operate. And we do use a strategic planner that we have in come once a year to reinforce our goals and objectives. So the entire board and the administrative staff are all on the same page, and we're all going in the same direction. And it's been very successful and very rewarding. And so we wanted to come tonight just to thank the public for supporting our millage increase last year and let you know that we are here. We're available to enhance service in any way we can. That said, I'm the political part of this. I'm the chairman of the board, as I am for the road commission, and you know, Mark's here for later. And so we have transit all basically in one body, which is kind of nice, because we have exceptional roads here, and they're every bit as good as our public transit system. With that said, Melissa Shutt's here for the operational part of the presentation, and she'll be able to answer direct questions about how we operate, how we serve, and any particular needs that you guys might have. This would be a good time to propose them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will try to be brief. Gail's touched base a little bit on what I wanted to talk about. Again, my name's Melissa Shutt, executive director at Clinton Transit. Been here three years. Before that, I was with SADA over in Chaiwasa County for 14 years as a mobility manager. And that mobility manager role really provided me with a very unique perspective stepping into the leadership role of Clinton Transit. A mobility manager is like a travel agent, right? That person understands all of the resources for moving people from A to B for mobility. And so coming over to Clinton Transit, that is the culture and the strategic plan that is to engrain that into everyone within our organization. And I'll get to that in just a minute. So, but three, or in August of 2020, when we put a millage increase on the ballot, we told the voters in this community that we were going to do three things. One was we were going to improve our wages and where they were going to be livable. And we have done that. Interestingly, as Gail pointed out, we never would have thought we would be at our $18 an hour for our operators and be competing with McDonald's. But that is the reality. But what that did for us, because those decisions were made prior to or just as COVID was coming on the scene, we have not had to be reactive to the wage crisis right now in the, across the state and across this country. But we, because we were already, those decisions were already in motion. So there's a lot of transit agencies that are in a much worse situation than we are. We're much far better off because of our wages. We already had the budget to support additional wages and additional service, whereas many of our counterparts across Michigan did not have that. And so that, that was a, well, the timing just ended up working out well for us. The other change for our labor is we used to be 30% part-time, 70% full-time, or excuse me, 30% part, full-time, 70% part-time. We have flipped that. We are now 70% full-time with benefits, full benefits, retirement, medical, television, and 30% part-time. There's always going to be a need for part-time labor within our industry, because we have our kind of peak hours in that morning and afternoon where we need that assistance. So we are going to be targeting that part-time operators over the next couple of months to help us get more service on the road during peak hours. The second thing that we said we were going to do with that additional local millage, and I did want to point, before I get to that, point out that the additional local millage also allows us then to draw down additional state and federal funds. We have increased our state and federal budget by 46% in three years, because we had that local millage to help support that. And so the second thing we said we were going to do was improve our technology. We had a very archaic dispatching software. We now have, in July of 21, we implemented equal lane, very robust. There's a lot going on behind the scenes in that new technology. It, of course, is not without its challenges and trying to make it work within what we do. But it has allowed us to increase our efficiencies where we are doing about, I would say, 25, 20 to 25% more rides pre-COVID with less routes. So our efficiencies have significantly increased as a result of that software. And of course, as a result of a really great dispatching team who, they, they're really good at what they do. That new technology also has allowed us, as you may have heard, we have implemented a mobile app. And so now we're improving that accessibility for our passengers, right? They can get on, you can download, go to your Play Store, look for Clinton Transit, download the app, and you can schedule, cancel your rides. Eventually, you'll be able to pay for your rides. We're working on that piece. One of, when you do see that, so if you ever hear about, you know, some of your constituents talking about the app, if they're new to the app, when they go in, it's going to tell them they, they're going to, you can turn, you can submit your, your information as a rider, but then it's going to be, need to be approved by our dispatch department. So there is one step that our dispatchers are still involved in. And because we, primarily, we didn't want to see duplicate accounts being created. We want to make sure that what's going into our dispatching software is good data, you know, garbage in, garbage out. We want to make sure that that stays clean and concise. So there is still dispatcher involvement. It doesn't replace our dispatchers at all. Actually, they're just as busy as they were before, but. The technology also is going to allow us, we're working on another piece of it, where it's a center's management portal. And what that will do is allow us to give third-party agencies, so some of our community partners, like DHHS, Medicaid Transportation, some of those community partners, access to the software, limited access to book rides for their clients, cancel rides, and eventually pay for rides. So technology is a huge piece of, of what we're continuing to improve upon at Clinton Transit. And the third and final thing, and I think it, probably the most important thing, I should have started with this, is we said we were going to improve our service. We were going to expand days, times, and we have done that. In April of 21, we added Saturdays. One route, within two weeks, that wasn't enough. So we are up to four routes and, and counting. Hiring sometimes is a challenge for Saturdays. So, but we have four full-time routes already. And surprisingly, my experience has shown that Saturdays is typically dialysis, is what I thought it was going to be. 80% of our rides on Saturdays is for work. So we are keeping people employed in Clinton County. It's just a huge benefit to those that, I'm not sure how they, you know, they're, they're able to keep their jobs or, or get jobs because of the, the service that we provide. We just recently added, went from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM during the weekday. And so that will continue to assess that and see if we need to be out later. That was really, again, to kind of capture their third and second, third shifters, getting out, going in. We're reviewing Sundays. I think, I'm a strong believer in life doesn't stop happening for any of us on Friday. And so I think Sundays are going to be important. We're going to be a little bit more, we're not so quick to jump to it, because it's just assessing where the need is going to be. Saturdays was a little easier to do that. I think Sundays, obviously, we know we're going to see church and, and again, probably employment. But that, that is coming down as well. So those, you know, when, when the community, over 70% of the community in Clinton County supported that millage increase, that's what you supported. We are truly at the, just at the tip of the iceberg of what we're going to be doing at Clinton Transit. I talked a little bit about that travel agent concept, right? And that mobility management when I started. And I, we're putting together some documentation that I can kind of share with you that's really easy to read, to try to translate what we're, what we're attempting to accomplish here as far as our strategic plan. But if you think of it as a wheel and a hub, in the middle of the wheel is Clinton Transit and everything, all the spokes are all of the community resources that move people. And so you think of not just traditional, like buses and air train, you know, planes, trains, and automobiles, but also think of those kind of non-traditional assets that we have in our community. Church vehicles that are sitting there during the week with people that have a heart for service. How do we get them involved in keeping people connected? Because ultimately, that's what it's about, is that mobility creates those connections, whether it's to your medical care, your employment, you know, your. Many times when I'm talking to people, they say, yeah, you know, it's really important to get people to doctor's appointments as they age. And I truly hope that when that time comes, when I'm no longer able to drive, that my life is more important than just getting to the doctors. That it's getting to a friend's, a lifetime friend has passed away, two counties away, and their funeral's over there, and getting to that funeral. It's getting to my grandson's soccer game on Saturday mornings. All of those quality of life trips are just as important, if not, in my opinion, more important. But I know many times decision makers can equate to, right? Employment and medical, those are easier. But I just, I always want to remind people when I talk to them that it's so much more than that. When you get in your car every day and just don't think about it, what are you connecting to? And so I'd really appreciate your time. I won't take any more of your time. I'll have some more ridership kind of data, and we're, we're getting that reporting piece of our software worked out. So I'll be able to give you some, some nice readable documents that you'll be able to really see what's going on, especially with your residents. What are they using it for? Where are they going? All of that data, we'll be able to pull from that. We're just, I'm getting trained on all of that right now. But in the meantime, I just wanted to kind of touch base again. It's been two years already, it just, I don't know where it went, but COVID kind of took over, and so it's good to be back face-to-face. If you have any questions, concerns, you have my card, please reach out. And thank you. Thank you for your support. Think the, I thank the residents of your community for your support, that you understand the value of what public transit is, and that is keeping people connected within, within the community. So I thank you for that. Any questions?
Doesn't seem to be Melissa, thank you so much.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We are good.
You took a word with it on my mouth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, for those of you who have an agenda, we're on seven, you can send agenda as amended. as amended.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the renewal of the minutes of the Public Art Committee meeting of March ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Butler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, we have approval of the minutes. That would be the Board of Trustee Minutes. For Masek.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Trustee meeting in Masek in two thousand twenty-two.
Sorry.
Mr. Butler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine, which is approval of vouchers. I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Butler, yes.
All right, item ten, which is the Treasury report, no attachment.
Well, not a lot more to report on other than what we reported on the last meeting. I will tell you that the draft copy, the audit that's been, was being, which we talked about, I believe, before, of the words, with that, we gave them okay for that. I will hear back from Crandall, Fitzpatrick, Fitzgerald, whatever the names are, somebody, somebody, somebody. On, very soon here, I'm thinking by the end of the month, I will, will be getting a, they'll probably have a presentation for us in June, what they're looking at. They haven't given me a date yet, so we'll be looking at that. We have all of our other stuff that's flowing along. Okay, at that point in time, when we get, when we get our actual copy, we'll be, we'll talk about fund balance again. We'll get to that, and I've talked to several board members, a couple of board members about that, and where we're at with that, as well as our American Rescue money would be in there, and we'll have, you know, a good idea, a good picture of all that stuff as far as what it's going to mean for the township. With that being said, we also have our F sixty-five report, which is a very important report, that will follow the audit here real quickly. The fifty-five seventy-two report, which is your wages report and your credibility report, as well as your continuing disclosure, will be to wrap up the last thing that we'll do, and that goes out to our Bonding Council, Benzinski and Company, who we hold all our sewer bonds with currently. Other than that, that's all I got for you tonight. If somebody's got a question, I'll try to answer it. Yes, please.
What's F sixty-five?
F sixty-five is a report of all your data, of what you have in the way of your high of life, basically, the audit, and a lot of the stuff in the, in the F sixty-five report is in the audit, and it's comprised and goes to the state of Michigan in a different, different category. A lot of people use it for creditworthiness and whatnot for their, whatever they do with the township.
Basically?
Just another statute report required by law that we have provided here. Along with that, there'll be, the MDNA report comes in, it's kind of a combination between that and the audit. The MDNA is a management discussion and analysis of what your physical health is at the township, what causes it, what causes it to be good or what causes it to be bad. In our case, it's going to be good.
What's the financial health?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Physical, that didn't sound right. All right, thank you. Is there any questions? No, there must be none. That's the only one. All right, we're going to go to item eleven, which is committee appointments, a large A, says Board Representative for the Recreation and Advisory Committee. Yeah, the superintendent.
Thank you. The, according to those that met at the Recreation Advisory Committee first meeting, it went very well, and they're looking forward to getting started on business. As a result, I would like to see a board representative appointed to them so they can have that person at their next meeting.
Oh, you want to point?
No, that's him. Right, it's working.
Okay. Any questions?
Does it, as it?
I was hoping either there would be discussion or someone would step forward.
You're looking for somebody from the township board or the board representative committee? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Does, does, do you usually do that, or does, who does that?
Well, that was done when, when the superintendent said it would either be Jason Arroyo or Les. I, he was.
I assumed it was one of you wanting to, I guess, the last one.
I only recommended that because one was from the Farmers Market Board and one was from the Parks and Recreation Board.
I don't, okay, I don't remember that being a recommendation, but.
It was not a recommendation. When I was asked who I thought it might be, I said one of those two people because they had sat in those positions previously.
At that same time, there were three from Farmers Market, three from Park Rec.
We just need a board liaison, that's all I'm asking.
No, I'm just saying, at that time, that's why that was determined.
Why, what was determined?
That it would be one or the other.
It's never been one or the other. Neither one of them have indicated a willingness to, in my opinion, I've not heard either one of them say they wanted to serve.
Okay.
I've heard another name floated around, so it's for this board to, if anybody wants to step up, or, I don't know who wants to serve. That's why I'm asking for this board to take action on somebody to serve. There's no appointment. There has been no appointment to this date.
Okay, that's, okay. Totally not how I understood. There's no, there's no board liaison at this time. Okay, well, no, there isn't.
I would like to nominate Joe Bensy.
Support.
Give him your ass, Joe. If there's something you want to add to your, so you can, okay, yes. So we need a vote on it?
Yep.
You won't support the voting, I'll support the vote.
That's okay.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
No.
Ms. Butler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are now on twelve, which is the Township Committee reports. Oh, there you are. President Park Lake President can be guarded.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and for being on the agenda. I'm not really a township committee, but I appreciate the opportunity. I'm speaking tonight for Friends of Park Lake. Summer is coming, and we are planning some summer fun at the lake, and I just wanted to share our plans with you so you know what to expect and what will be going on and what is planned for around the lake this summer. On Saturday, June the eleventh, we're having our first annual family bike ride. We'll have two routes. It will start, the family bike ride will start at ten AM with registration at nine-thirty in Wishwasher Park. We have two routes that we've set, and perhaps we'll do a third, depending on how many riders there are. The first route will take people from Wishwasher Park to the Park Lake Nature Trail trailhead and water control structure, so people can actually see where the Park Lake Nature Trail is going to be and look at the dam and see how it operates, and then they'll ride back to Wishwasher Park. It would be very helpful if, at that time, the township and the County Road Commission had agreed to take the private road sign down, which doesn't belong there and is inappropriately placed. Again, registration at Wishwasher Park at nine-thirty. The ride will begin at ten. We'll have directional signs along the way. There'll be water stations, wet resting stations. We've gone over the routes with the police department, and they're coordinating with us on that. The second event will be Friday, July eighth, about seven o'clock. It will be a free outdoor live music concert. The band performing will be a band called Dangling Cardiciples. They are really a fun, family-oriented band. It'll be a two-hour performance. There will be an intermission, so people will be able to get up and move around. We are asking people to bring lawn chairs because hopefully they'll be able to sit out in the bowl at Wishwasher Park and listen to some really good music. This will be a free event. We will be collecting donations if people want to make a donation. The band, we are paying four hundred dollars for the band. They do have a fee, but our goal is to see how popular free outdoor music concert would be at that venue and for the township. On Saturday, August sixth, we will have in the afternoon from two to six, the Park Lake Summer Festival and Cardboard Boat Challenge. We'll be using Wishwasher Park, the boat launch, and the beach. The cardboard boat challenge will probably begin around five-thirty, so we'll be off the beach at six, I imagine. The cardboard boat challenge this year is actually being headed up by our new recreation director, which she's really excited about it. She's been in cardboard boat challenges before, and she knows some people in the community who might like to join the challenge, so we're excited to have Becca as a partner on that part of the event. I will say, just for the purposes of understanding, that is the Bath Days Weekend. And Friends of Park Lake approached Bath Days and asked them if we could provide leadership to them and assist and coordinate, collaborate with them, and have the bathtub race in the morning with a family-friendly event in James Cousins Park while that, while they were preparing for, and doing the car, doing the bathtub race. And then we would move the event from downtown over to the park in the afternoon, Wishwasher Park in the afternoon. I spoke to every member and every past member who had been involved with Bath Days. They are just not prepared to even assist us in helping them with the bathtub race. So we are planning the afternoon with the Park Lake Summer Festival in the afternoon on August the sixth. Friends of Park Lake would, also, changing the topic just a little bit, like to partner with the township and the Clinton County Road Committee on planning and implementing, not just talking about, but implementing traffic calming measures on Park Lake Road. For those of you who do not know, a car crashed into my house on March the sixth. That portion of the house will be demolished today. The estimates for repairing my house are over a hundred and ten thousand dollars. People are driving too fast down Park Lake Road. There was another woman who lives on Park Lake Road. In the winter, a car came within a foot and a half of knocking over her garage. Summer is upon us. Children are walking down that road. Moms are pushing strollers down that road. People are walking down there with skateboards and biking down Park Lake Road, and the traffic is just moving too fast. We have discussed this at the Friends of Park Lake community level. We would like improved signage. Please put a sign up that says you're approaching a beach. There are maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty people on that beach in the summer when we're using the beach, and there's not even a sign down there on either side of the beach that says you're approaching a beach. At least let them know that if they are not familiar with the road, that they are approaching a beach. We feel crosswalks would be effective from the beach across Park Lake Road, perhaps to the township parking lot across from the Green Marine. We really feel, as we've discussed with the Road Commission, when we were talking about widening the road, speed tables. We were told that if having the computer at the top of the hill that says what speed you're going wasn't effective, that if the township was interested, they would like to talk about speed tables, and I think it's the time that we do take some action and talk about that. Another suggestion, I, I went to the Bath Township Road Committee meeting, and I discussed these issues in detail with them. I'm sorry to say neither of our township board members were at that meeting, but at that meeting, the Road Committee was interested in looking at whether or not rails around some of those curves would be effective. Again, I think that the township really must step up to the plate and work with the county, not only to assess, but to perhaps bring an engineer down. We have to find some way to calm the traffic in that area. It's dangerous. Thirdly, I see in the agenda, in the packet tonight, that there is a opportunity for the township to look at ways to invest in improvements that will brighten up our life, I'll say. So, again, in conversations with people that we've had at Friends of Park Lake meetings, I would just suggest that these things have been identified as things that would really be assets to our community. One is an accessible kayak launch. So I'm just bringing these to your attention for consideration when you're talking about the Consumers Power Grant application. Two, a premier shore-based fishing area and dock. Three, expanding the beach to the west. Four, a splash pad at Wishwasher Park. And five, also for consideration, we would ask you to think about the additional phases that we need to complete the trail. Thank you, and I'll take questions if anyone has any.
I didn't hear your last additional phase.
I'm sorry, Steve, could you speak into the microphone?
I didn't hear what additional phases to complete what? What was the last?
The Park Lake Nature Trail?
Trail, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Marie?
I have a silly question, I'm sure. What's a speed table?
Have you ever driven through Hawk Hollow in order to get over to Chandler Rose? Those are speed tables. They are speed bumps, you know, they don't make you boom, but they actually make you slow down and be conscious of your speed as you're moving along.
Okay, so they call them speed tables?
That's called a speed table. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we're on thirteen, item thirteen, unfinished business. Items of introduction and discussion. Thank you, Mark. I was going to say, where's Mark at?
Mark Trotter, engineer at the Road Commission. Karen, I don't know if you want to introduce kind of what we wanted to talk about.
You can go ahead, and if there's any further questions, we can.
I'm mainly here to answer questions on the items that are on the agenda. We have engineering contract between the Township and Road Commission for the Webster Road and Safe Routes to School project. That would be a contract held by the Road Commission with one of our pre-approved consultants, design consultant. We put out RFPs, we had three proposals come back, we scored them, we sat down with Karen. Basically, between the Road Commission and Township, we picked one of those, one of the three, basically the highest-scoring consultant. That's who we're recommending to sign a contract with. That's for the engineering services on that project. We also have on the agenda the construction agreement between the Township and the Road Commission for the actual construction costs of building the Webster Road project, the Safe Routes to School, and a TAP sidewalk project. So it's all combined into one group. Basically, from the Road Commission side, we'd like to get basically consensus from the township to move forward with these projects and actually putting a number on them and getting the okay to go forward, so that's, that's what we had on the agenda. We had a third agreement for tree cutting and some drainage improvements on Drumheller Road also, and I think that, that had come up previously a few months ago, and we just wanted to finalize that out, get us a contract, and we can, we can start working on that.
Can I clarify? The first two, when we met, we decided the first two, the engineering and the construction of Webster Road, would be targeted for two thousand twenty-four.
Correct.
Which is reflective in the contracts that are in front of you and the ones that are the next.
We, we had a couple options there that, you know, originally the job, you know, that we worked on with Safe Routes to School, that trustee Yelma Gary kind of led. We had always been going for the two thousand twenty-four timeframe. There was a possibility of bumping it up to two thousand twenty-three, but the more we looked at it, we weren't really comfortable with expediting a schedule and making sure that we had all the township utility. utility items figured out. You know, there's some potential sanitary sewer work that should go with the project. So, we wanted to make sure everyone has time to review the plans, you know, have the correct project before we go forward. So, 2024 is the best timeline for everyone.
May I ask where the dollars? This is more than what our road commission has. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
So, I guess, and that's not a question you can answer, I guess Karen has to answer that. One's $133,048, and the other is $366,516. And then, of course, $30,000, which that obviously can be covered, I think, if my math is right. That's still, that's about $54,000 plus.
So, since these are for 2024, we would have to, all along, be talking and working towards how these would be paid for, and if they would be in addition to regular road work that we do, which can be anywhere from $200, $300, $400, or if this is in addition or in place of, that those all need, that issue will need to be discussed prior to 2024.
So, basically, if I'm understanding these two items that we need to, actually there's three, but the two, the most expensive ones, in 2024, those are items, so the road committee won't have any money?
That's not how you're watching it.
No, that's what I'm asking, usually, that's road committee dollars. But the sidewalks, we're looking at grants, is that what we're assuming? That we're gonna get grants for the $366,000?
So, the tap monies and the Safe Routes to School monies factor into those? But this, for the second one, for Webster Road, I'm sorry, I have to get to that one.
Well, Webster, at Drumheller, is that what you're talking about?
The costs on these contracts, those are the township out-of-pocket costs. That's your match money that goes into the grant and anything additional that's not covered by the grant. So, that's your 100% local township funding.
For sidewalks?
Yep, for anything sidewalk-related on the Webster project.
Okay, so, if these are approved tonight, then that means that's something in the future we need to work at?
The road committee and the board of trustees, and yes, me, will all have to be talking and coming up with the answer to that.
The engineering costs would be immediate, you know, we'd like to start right away on the engineering contract. The construction, the township wouldn't see bills for construction until probably middle, mid to end of 2024. August, September, 2024, when you'd start seeing construction bills.
Do we know the engineering cost?
That is the contract.
The first piece of paper that was in the packet, the $190,069. And that includes a 10%?
That's the proposal we got from the engineering company, plus a 10% contingency.
So, we would see bills for this one in this fiscal year?
Correct, for the engineering.
The entirety or just some of it?
Some of it.
You're saying 10%?
10% contingency above their proposal.
I'm sorry, I'm missing the intention here.
So, in this fiscal year, Karen, will we be taking that 133 or whatever portion is spent out of the road budget?
So, at this time, there's currently $89,449 left in the road budget, so those could be paid out of there.
Do we need to make an amendment to up that?
It's going to depend, it's gonna be one of those items that's on a watch list until the final quarter. It depends on if they use less than the $50,000. No, I won't need a budget amendment. If they use more than that, there's potential for it.
You're quoting the 89,000? That's not with the 30,000.
So, I said if it was less than 50?
Yeah, because it comes out to 59,449.
So, if they use less than that, we can pay it out of this fiscal year.
Okay, so if they have more than that? 59,000, not 89.
But currently, there's 89, because you've not approved this contract yet, right?
That's correct. But with the 30,000?
With the 30, you're correct, there's 30.
It would be 59.
Karen, will this be affected if we don't get the Safe Routes to Schools money?
Yes.
Would that drive our cost up then? Do you know how much?
Well, if there would be orders, probably, we would...
Yeah, we'd probably pare the project back to what the township could afford.
We would still continue with the Webster work and probably the TAP, the sidewalk from Drumheller, selling to the highway, because that's the TAP grant monies. So, that number would have to be refigured.
All indications from the Safe Routes program is that we're on track to receive. They won't confirm until, I think, the end of June, we'll get an actual confirmation letter, but all indications are good.
Oh, sorry, Mark, I was trying to find the engineer cost.
It's the first contract.
It's the first contract that says $190,069. The second one for construction is $1.463 million.
So, the engineering cost is 190,000?
Just to break that down, the design cost, I believe, was in the maybe $60,000 range. A lot of your cost is construction engineering. When you get into construction of having an inspector out, doing all the materials testing, all the M. dot paperwork, that, I believe, was in the $100,000 range. So, you'll see that in 2024 during construction, but it's considered engineering.
Okay, this one does say total construction cost.
Okay. The township share, that's the 133, $133,48.
Yes.
I have a question. Mark, are these charges billed as they occur, or is this something that you collect upfront, spend the bills gone, or how's that ordered?
We'll hold the contract at the road commission, we'll pay the consultant directly, and then we'll ask for reimbursement through the township afterwards. So, you know, we can do that on a monthly basis, you know, whatever we work out that works best for the township. We'll pay the bills upfront and get reimbursed. So, if that comes to, you know, even if we have to float some money to 2023, you know, if it fits on your budget in '23, better, we could float some of it for a few months.
The engineering firm will look at it until they have $133,000 worth with, and they're gonna work to, if they come up with $133,000, or I guess that's kind of where our fault is.
No, you know...
It's kind of a pointed question, I realize.
Yeah, but we'll keep an eye on it, you know, I get a billing, I'll get probably a bi-weekly billing breakdown of their hours and what they put in. You know, I'll know what parts we're working on at different times, so if I see a bill for $50,000, I'll be able to look back and say, did you spend that time in the last two weeks?
In the 2022 budget year, do you foresee this going over $89,000 of what we have left over next fiscal year to be appropriated?
I don't believe so at this time.
Well, you're saying for now?
You're trying to know what was supposed to be the road?
Right.
Okay.
You need to approve the contract, you're saying, for now, and you'll have to approve the appropriated money.
Well, it would be for now.
For this year.
If you approve this one, we get the $59.
I think you did a good job on this.
Good question.
Are there questions on the, I know you mentioned the Drumheller contract for the tree stump removal and the ditching drainage. Are there questions on that?
The only question that I have at all is, seeing that down to $59,449, is that going to be enough, are there any other projects? George Park and I frequently speak, and I don't know that there are more projects this year, except for the ones that we've already approved.
And just for a quick update, we already have the paving, the Bonnie Meadows, so those, base paved last week, and we're topping at the end of this week, so moving along. If there are any other projects that pop up, if you have extra money, you know, our paving crew is available, so there are other projects.
Yeah, we've, to date, we've approved Bonnie Meadows, brush spraying, chloride, overgrain, the track filling, gravel, graveling peacock between park and north of the township line, and mowing gravel shoulders. The other gravel was freeness.
Do we need to action on that one?
Not tonight. I was planning to bring it back to you at the first June meeting.
Thank you, Mark, so much.
I would like to say thanks for your road committees and the people that helped get that Webster and Safe Routes project to where it's at right now, so, and we had a lot of community involvement in the last probably six months to get us here, so we appreciate it from the road commission side.
Will you come back to the township with the Safe Routes to School starts to look like it's a problem, and tell us when enough time that we can look for alternatives, not lose our cost of doing it?
Yeah, as soon as, if I hear anything between now and the end of June that, you know, things are not going forward, I'll be sure to let everybody know.
Hang on, Mark, I think we have a question.
No, I'd just like to make a statement. The painting of the roads looked really good, and I appreciate the county being able to get the better contractor to do it. It looks very good.
Yep, we did. We paid a little more this year for striping, but we got the better contractor in Michigan, and their work showed.
Yes, it does.
Mark, thank you so much. Okay, I'd like to have items for action, large B, Park Lake Homes.
No.
I'm sorry, what?
Marijuana.
Marijuana. Why doesn't it smoke pretty good by riding? You're on.
So, I handed out a copy of our approved marijuana ordinance, that's 3169. We approved this with changes back in 2021, almost a year ago. There's some extra copies that I made if folks in the audience need them. So, as we have looked to implement the process to do a competitive application for the recreational, adult recreational use, and as we have been looking as a planning commission for improving some of the things that could have been done differently when the ordinances were made, it's become clear that, I don't mean to speak on behalf of the planning commission, but I'm gonna attempt to do that, any of them could disagree with me at any time. The feeling I got from the majority of the members was that they were not in full support with some of the limitations that the previous board has put into place around required spacing. So, this is page 15 of the document I handed out, and it's highlighted for you. As we have worked through this process to figure out, you know, what would we rather see, and what's the hangups, and what's jamming us up in terms of staffing and in terms of decision-making at the planning commission level, it's clear there's a belief on the planning commission that they have in the past been given a directive by this board on what should or should not happen, so that whatever comes forward, the board would be supportive in the long run. At this point, we have, a majority of the board has overturned, since that last board was in place, who made these decisions. So, I've been tasked with asking for sort of a temperature check or a gut check from this current board. Are we all still in alignment with these items, or are there items here where we could be more malleable on, that would allow the planning commission to do the work that they would normally do in making recommendations to us, that would eventually come up to us for approval later? The planning commission does not want to make recommendations and spend time on a process making recommendations to this body if this body, at the end of the day, is not interested in those changes. So, that's what I'm here to do, ask how folks are feeling about the required spacing. I have one other issue that I'll bring up that's secondary to this, but I just want to give space to my colleagues to talk about, is this where we still want to be? Is it 2,000 feet on some of these? Is it 3,000 feet? You know, the daycare issue has been in particularly jamming us up a bit. There's only so many parcels that are available in the township. I think that's the strategic outcome that the board was looking to do, right? So, the more of these required spacing pieces you put into place, the fewer parcels that are available to have these businesses. So, that's part of what we're trying to work through at the planning commission level. Is this where we still want to be? Do we need to look at these things differently? I'm not asking anybody for a decision tonight, or, you know, we're not taking action, obviously, but I'd like to be able to bring back to the planning commission to say, like, the board is still pretty hot and heavy on these items, or the board feels flexible about this item but not about that item. That will give the planning commission some direction on how to spend their time that will be most efficient and productive.
Oh, got a handle.
When it was passed, the board was, give a year before we would do any, make any decisions, so that we could see what problems occurred over there, and see whether we wanted another one or not. And if we, at that point, don't want another one, there's no sense going through that. But if they want, I think at that time, we should decide whether we want it or not.
Yeah, to be clear, this is not about adding another license. This is about the spacing that is here between facilities, the spacing between a facility and a school, between a facility and a daycare, between a facility and the highway. That's what we're trying to deal with, because we have not issued the license yet for the one license we have available yet, because we have not been able to put the process together because of legis, excuse me, not legislation. What's the word I'm looking for, Karen?
Lawsuits.
Yes, thank you, lawsuits. The opposite of legislation.
The other L-word.
The other L-word. That's happening across the state, so our attorneys and our staff have sort of put it on pause to make sure we're not implementing something that turns out to be not upheld by courts. Because this is fast-moving and fast-changing, you know, since the township has approved this, it was, you know, 2018 when the statewide law has been passed. In that four years, the whole world has changed, the law has changed, people's opinion have changed, and so that leads us to today, where we need to, I'm asking, to revisit these items to see if this is still where the board is at, as we implement that one license. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I still think we have to wait.
Well, if I may, the thing that we are thinking about here is that's in terms of, and I hope Miles will correct me if I'm incorrect, is that right now we're looking at one retailer license, that you can still have growers, that there would have to be 1,000 feet from...
The required spacing only applies to retailers and microbusinesses. Marijuana grower, medical, or recreational could be placed, but none of that required spacing applying to them. They're permitted anywhere in the T development district.
Okay.
I wasn't here, so this was done long before I was here, but I guess I'm not, help me understand what the planning commission's problem has been with what the board passed.
So, one of the challenges has been this daycare issue. So, there's this required spacing between a daycare and a facility. So, because there is only so many, you know, plots of land where a dispensary could be placed, if we put daycares in that vicinity, the number of plots just shrinks, shrinks, shrinks. So, you know, a creative idea that apparently has been seen in other communities is that competitors would open a daycare to prevent another retailer from coming in, or prevent another business from coming in. I don't know that we have seen that here, but it is, it's sort of jamming up what our priority is as a township. Is it daycares, or is it marijuana? Both are legal, both are... Both are legal, both are able to be had in the township, but we're coming to a point where, you know, one of the discussions at the planning commission has been, do we ban daycares within this area where marijuana is allowed? As a parent and employer, that has sort of rubbed me the wrong way, that that probably isn't where we want to be, but it, it, there has to be solutions to these problems that we're finding that could be one of them, if we don't have other options.
So at this point, the planning commission is operating on ancillary information? Information that they've heard that the assumption would be that a daycare would be purchased by a marijuana owner? Try, try it again.
They're not operating on an assumption. We're trying to look at every option that is given to the public, given to marijuana operators, given to us as a board, and trying to figure out what, what does that do in terms of letting us do things and preventing us from doing things? It makes the conversation, every time we try to come up with a solution, there's like, oh, but this, this provision is in here, so it prevents us from having that solution. So these are the items that prevent us from being creative, prevent us from using these opportunities differently, the ones listed in here. The previous board has set these forth. The planning commission is operating under a directive from that previous board, these are the things we care about, this is what we want built in. But if we are not married to these issues, the planning commission could look at other opportunities, again, to recommend up to us to make the final decision.
So why aren't we married to this?
I'm not saying we aren't, we're just, we're five different people than we were, or four different people than we were back when this was passed.
I, I was gonna, it's okay, I was gonna ask, Miles, how many parcels there are available for?
It's not many, it's in mid to low teens.
That are available for?
Recreational.
So for rec, for adult use?
But if they have to be a thousand feet from a daycare, that's even it, even more. It may bring that number down.
It makes that number even worse, yeah.
Okay, do we know what that number is? And I, frankly, I wasn't here, so I'm, I'm only trying to figure out why the planning commission's having problems with what it is that's being asked of them to support. I guess that's my only, because you can change anything. You get something, I mean, any board can change anything.
That's what I'm asking you. Are you interested or open to changing any of this?
No, well, if this is what the board decided, I think, I think I was right, you've got to take about a year before you figure out what's going on, but if you're looking at different entities that will be coming in, that can happen anytime.
But the, the problems exist now, so we can wait a year to see if there's problems, but what the planning commission and what Miles has informed us is, these problems exist in the current space.
Can I leave a comment, is that okay?
No, please do, that would help, please.
So, all right, there's a lot going on here.
Yeah, there is.
And so I'm gonna try to sum it up as simple as we can put as I can. So, one industry that I think you could probably look at to gauge, you know, how marijuana's currently involved in this alcohol industry, so, some, in recent Michigan history, it used to be commonplace in terms of zoning, that there would be zoning distances and required spacing around churches adjacent to bars.
Sure.
Back in, probably when I was in high school, I think, they, that got very loosened up. When, yeah.
Yesterday.
That got very loosened up, and they allowed craft, craft beer breweries to start opening up, bars were becoming more of an economic development tool in downtown areas. You saw cities like Grand Rapids really capitalize on that.
Yes.
They wiped out all the required spacing languages because it became a financial burden to these communities, having, because churches also just happened to be located in downtown districts. So it became very difficult to have these growing, emerging industries with this legacy zoning in place. So now we're seeing similar issues develop in the marijuana space. Marijuana was a new use that people were concerned about, and people had a lot of fears about that, around that. Some of those fears reasonable, some of those fears maybe unreasonable, that's up for you guys to decide. I think that's where we get into the realm of opinion. Anyways, with those required spacing being in place at the time, four years ago, when you guys decided to use terms like a thousand feet or two thousand feet from this object or that object, you created a map at that time, right, in two thousand eighteen? Now, what I don't know, because I wasn't here at the time, is, maybe the expectation was that we would move quickly as a township to opening up that one license, however, that hasn't been the case. Four years have gone by, and that map that you created at the time is no longer the map, because the map is stat, not static. The map that you chose to go with depends on these other uses moving around. I like to call it the weaponization of zoning, and that's something that we have seen play out in the state where, Ryan said, where, you know, you're in an industry with millions, maybe billions of dollars on the line. A community only allows one license to take place in one area. Now, let's say your competitor gets that license, you have every incentive to, you look at their zoning code and use it to your advantage. So you could say, okay, well, they don't let this near daycares, I'm gonna start up a daycare, zone out the whole area. And because you guys went with such a, in my opinion, restrictive zoning measure, such as two thousand feet, that's a wide radius there. So you could basically zone out our whole marijuana district, if that's what you want to call it, where this use is allowed, you know, this retail marijuana district, you could zone out that whole district with one daycare. Pretty cheaply, too, and if you could do that to, you know, help your competitor lose millions of dollars, it seems like something you would obviously do.
Thanks, Miles, that was much.
Miles, I got a question. Dylan answered.
Yeah.
If you could go to a point regarding spacing, you know, G, that says, in regards to retailer and micro-businesses, you spoke to that in another role, and specifically, that, that talks about the Webster Road corridor, and actually, we actually went as far as we even talked about establishments shall not be located within a thousand feet of the Webster Road on the westbound I sixty-nine ramp, which is right next door here, and Clark Road on the north. Going back, and obviously, I was on the board, I was one of these dinosaurs around. I think, I think you guys are retreads, too.
Yeah, yeah, we are retreads.
But anyhow, and with that letter G, let's go back to where it says, I want a clarification on what this means.
No, I got it.
It says, and obviously, I agree to it, in fact, that's something I told them that they did this for me, because I was totally against doing anything, and they did this for me, I don't know if that was, I didn't know if that was the case, but, oh, but going back, it says, any retailer, microbi, micro-business, or other. What does other mean?
Other, yeah. See, those, those are some of the ambiguities in the ordinance, and that's one of many that the planning commission has identified as ambiguous and even legally tenuous. So we've been trying to clean up those ambiguities. Because I don't, because I-
Ryan, do you think others is a good word to have in there? I don't, I'm planning commissioner, I don't, I don't like planning, but I don't-
No.
I don't like other either. And then my other question, you made a statement, you talked about a growth facility, this would include an indoor growth facility, and this is the D development area, so what you're saying is, is that indeed, a growth facility could be placed within a thousand feet in this corridor right here, is that correct?
My current understanding of language is that is correct.
Unless a daycare was put in there.
No, this doesn't apply, required spacing doesn't apply to growth facilities. However, the license that everyone is most interested in just so happens not to be growth facilities, the license everyone's most interested in happens to be retailer. There's plenty of places in this state and other states to grow and ship these things, what there are not, is there's a finite amount of space to sell this product.
It's exacerbated by the fact that we have one medical retailer license, right?
I mean, yes, we do have one, that-
So if it's not given to the same entity, these things force them around?
Even those, it depends, once again, ambiguity, how the language was crafted, I think that could be interpreted either the way you just said it, or that they themselves, through the application process for this new license, have to fill that required spacing. So even the facility that currently operates as medical, still, these would apply to them under their new license. But even that, I think, needs to be cleared up.
The new license being the adult use?
The adult use recreational retail.
Hasn't been confirmed, it's still-
It, it hasn't been sought after, the process hasn't been placed.
I haven't launched the process. We've been waiting for several lawsuits to clear up before, many of the lawsuits that have resulted from the competitive process, so we've been watching those to try to build a better competitive process. Chances are, we will be sued when we pick someone for the, the adult use retailer, but we're trying to improve our chances of winning that case by watching what's happening unfolding in other cases.
And Karen, would you say our chances of getting sued are high?
Yes, yes.
Regardless of what you say.
Yes.
Obviously, it's time for us to review this, but other board members can correct this old dinosaur also. I believe, when we originally did this, we said we would take a year after the facility opened, to study what the changes would be, and so on and so forth. That facility is still not open.
But I think what we're saying is, is it's already being impacted, and it's not even open yet.
The problem is with the ability to open that one.
I, I think it's time to review this. It's been four years, I was involved in it in the beginning, and it's time to look at, look at it, get the word other out of there, and some other things that you might want.
So the planning commission is, is also interested in opening this back up. We are going to, because of the process anyway, so while we have it open, why don't we fix some of the other things? But what they don't want to do, again, is spend a bunch of time to bring you all something that you say, wait a minute, no, we were married to the school idea, or the daycare idea, or the thousand feet, or the two thousand feet. So I'm hoping that you all can give a little bit of guidance to the planning commission on which of these are deal breakers, and which of these you could maybe soften on.
Go ahead, I was gonna say-
I'm looking at a finger going.
As the, as the stigma of both medical and adult use lessons, I think what we're asking is, do you still feel the need to make sure children are a thousand or two thousand feet away from this, or, or should schools be, I don't know what it is for schools.
A thousand.
A thousand feet, or are you saying that, no, that's not a big deal anymore? So, so I guess we're asking specifically, how do you feel about the use of a daycare or a school being close to a retail marijuana facility? Should they be par apart, or should they be, can they be closer together?
And the practicality of that is, because the, the world has, has changed so much, you know, you can, you can go pick up your kid from the daycare, and now state law allows you to have a drive-through dispensary, so you could, like, go through the drive-through to get your gummies while your kid's in the car, you then go home and you can use that substance while your children are in the household. So we may be protecting, you know, the township's children from something that their parents aren't even interested in protecting them from. Our ordinances won't allow you to use marijuana leaves, or the term marijuana on the side of the building, or on the signage, they can't get in because there's guards and there's a waiting area in between, so there's sort of things in play that are preventing children from accessing the, the building, and even really understanding what is happening in the building. So when we say you can't put up, like, one of the, picture the sky mints that are all over, like, you don't, you don't know what those are, Ray told us he had to go in to figure out what it was, or at least that's his story, so, you know, what are we protecting children from if we don't, we can't even identify what the building is, they can't see, they can't access, that sort of thing?
Okay. Thank goodness there's a cop sitting there, because I'm gonna say something that I hope you either raise your hand, or stand up, or whatever, to say, no, she's nuts. We do that with alcohol. I don't know what you're talking about when it comes to marijuana. I mean, when that first came out, when cannabis was used, the very, very first thing I thought was, what is the difference between that and alcohol? I don't know, I still can't answer my own question. They have problems, law enforcement has problems, when you've got open intaks in a vehicle, or some, or a parent drives through and picks up a six-pack and walks out with, you know, three kids in the car. I don't, the saving of the children is not, for me, anyway, it's very much the same that we have an alcohol. What I still am trying to understand here is, if you have a thousand feet from a school, or a thousand feet from a daycare, if I'm understanding what's being said, that can be purchased, because banks are a little hard up with cannabis now, some of them are starting to understand, it's quite including, but my point being that a thousand feet's a pretty good size distance for that. I think what you're looking at, if I'm understanding everything that's being said, and what you're looking at here, and what Miles is trying to put together, one, I can't control, or I can't compare Bath to Grand Rapids, it just won't work, that just doesn't work for me. But I understand where you're coming from with it. But it still has to go back to what it is that the individual is looking for. Is it the lawsuits that we want to disperse, or we want to do away with, or is it this actual language? And yes, there is some cleaning up that needs to be done, if you read it.
It's improving the flexibility of the township-
Okay.
-to protect what we want to protect, but also allow this business that we and our voters have said is allowed. Right now, those things aren't necessarily harmonious together, mostly, but not entirely. So that, jamming up of that, prevents us from doing some zoning and other things that we want to do. On top of that, we are seeing that most of these competitive processes are also being sued, especially when there's one license, because it makes it really valuable to get that one license. So it's, it's twofold, it's, we've made things in mine, and I'll agree with Miles' distinction, too restrictive, in a small space, so it, it prevents the flexibility we need with planning, and we need to shore up what we're doing in order to protect ourselves from lawsuits.
I'll also say, just last little thing here, too, one common issue, and this is typically more seen so with trailer parks, and we talked about this a little bit at the PC, but if a community has said, this use is allowed in our community, but then their zoning has been crafted in such a way that they exclude that use, now we're in lawsuit territory, lawsuit territory that we will a hundred percent lose.
Because of our zoning.
Because of our zoning. And in this case, of police power, so it's not even zoning, so there's not even a great case law around this, so puts us in even more tenuous territory, but, just to add on to the sandwich of issues.
So the way to fix it would be to constrict or expand? What's, what's the way to fix it?
Ryan, do you care if I go into the kind of the fix? So we've thought hard about this, and looked at this a lot of different ways, and sought counsel on this from a number of different legal experts. So we're looking at possibly taking some of this required spacing language, what you would traditionally see in a zoning ordinance, but in this case, it was moved into a police power ordinance, and taking it back and moving it into a zoning ordinance in the form of some kind of overlay district. That will keep this use from the sand shifting, it will be tied to parcels, these parcels that we're talking about in the mid to low teens. Now, nothing can flex. Now, the reason that Ryan was charged with taking kind of you guys' polls, I guess, is because- because if myself, staff, and the planning commission have been led by this ordinance that's in front of you guys, to believe that daycares and marijuana separate, well, then my suggestion would be, and this is why we kind of went down this road, then my suggestion would be, if we have an overlay district, and that overlay district overlays whatever, in this case, let's say, de-development district, right? And we have a use that's in conflict, that this community has said, "This use, we feel, is in conflict," then my recommendation as a planner, as it would be with any uses that are in conflict, regardless of marijuana, daycare, it could be apartments and factories. If this community has said, "We don't want factories by apartments," then my suggestion would be to put them in different districts. So to Ryan's point now, so my, if my professional planning suggestion is, "Daycare is our conflict here, get them out of de-development district," well, then now, is that something that this body feels is a good idea? Or does this body say, "You know what? We actually don't mind daycares in the de-development district, and we'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis when SUPs come?"
And, if I understand right, from what you've told us before, Miles, that, that overlay district would still have these required spacing around the perimeter, right?
The overlay district has been crafted based upon the required spacing language as it was laid out in 2018.
But if, like, someone wanted to open a daycare next to the overlay district, it would still be allowed in this other district, but the overlay district would not allow it, but there'd still be perhaps less than a thousand feet?
There would still be perhaps less than a thousand feet, yes. That could be a scenario that could play out.
When you talk about the overlay, are you talking about the whole township, or just...
No, it's a very specific overlay. It's about 14 parcels. It's not a big area. Because the language it was crafted around is confining language, and we've stuck with that, and we feel that that language is adequate, but we'd like to make it so the sands aren't shifting here. I think, in this industry, in any business industry, it's important for a township to create a regulatory structure that creates stability in that industry. I am, I'm sure that farmers wouldn't appreciate if there was legislation or ordinances in place that could zone out their farm. Sorry. Maybe I shouldn't use farms as an example. Any industry, right? It could be, let's say, factories.
This is all a law called the right to farm. Eight acres is placed into that.
A hundred percent, so let's say, let's say, tool and die shop.
They, they already have, but if you, the right to farm only goes to 40 acres. If somebody, your, your neighbor's got a 10-acre field, and then they want to have a farm, and the neighbor next door's going, "Oh, legally, you probably can't farm that field." That somebody wants to go to the township and complain about it.
I'd always be an advocate for, you know, looser farming regulation.
A lot of people like to eat.
Yeah. I think most people enjoy it.
I don't know if you've noticed, but there's a big, there's a shortage, it's, it's in the news that there's a world food shortage, and they're actually paying farmers to take land out of the countryside, and bring it back into the rules, the farm, as well as they're doing away with some of the other rules. And, and meanwhile, the, the, not everybody's got that memo in Washington, because they still send you nasty grams of something, like rainage, or wetlands, or something like that, it's not within the, the specs, but we're getting off subject.
No, I just left two figures. All right, that's a government, that's sad.
I'll never use farms as an example.
Not unless you have to take the law into account.
I'm sorry, there's pizza in, in the room. It took all my attention away.
No, I didn't order those.
Does this board confirm this with the planning commission?
No, the planning commission is gonna take this up, uh, whether the board likes it or not, at this point, but the, the question is, are we strongly married to these items, or is there a looseness that would allow the planning commission to come back and say, "Maybe it's 2,000 feet, maybe it's not daycares," that we then would have the final say on? But again, the planning commission doesn't want to spend any time on something that we have made clear we're married to.
All right. If, if you're talking about an overlay district, has the planning commission already determined the 14 parcels for the overlay? Because...
Well, this has.
Yeah, difference, then. What was in this is still in the overlay district.
That's...
This body determined that district in 2018, when they put those words on that paper.
So the planning commission can take what we have today, overlay it, and see what's there, and what the issue is, or issues?
However, the only issue could be what Ryan has alluded to, which is if we go with an overlay district, even if we craft link, we do not have at this point, but if we went with that...
No.
And we craft...
We're saying this, this has been restrictive, but this is not an overlay district.
Okay.
And if we craft language to not allow daycares within the limits of that overlay district, that doesn't stop somebody from building a daycare right next to that overlay district? And does this body, I think that's the question you're trying to get after tonight, is this, how's this body feel about that?
So it is the overlay that we need to determine?
Overlay, no. What we need to determine, there's...
Your thousand feet is still...
There's two options here. Either this body feels that daycares possibly going near the overlay district is acceptable, or daycares would be need, be seen as a conflicting use, and a recommendation could be to remove them from the district in which they are in conflict.
But we don't have an overlay district, right?
One's going, the planning commission could bring one to this body.
That's what I'm asking.
And if it came to this body, I guess what, where, Ryan is attempting to get the temperature on how you feel about those, one of those two options, because you can't have both.
No. Okay.
Yeah, and the spacing between facilities, too, I think, could be something that we all soften on.
Yeah, because right now, even within the overlay district, a thousand feet between all facilities of all types will be maintained, which I think the intent was to have these uses sprinkled in with other uses, and we feel that's just good planning, so we...
Which keeps them in one place. That's what an overlay does.
We'll keep them, well, we'll keep them in one district, and then we sprinkle it in amongst other uses. Now, but the day, the daycare, the, what we like to call sensitive uses, look, those are in question.
I like that, too.
What do we want to do with those?
So basically, what that does, then, if, if this is agreed upon, which we need to redo, or to look at it again, that takes care of the lawsuits?
I think it would put us in significantly better legal footing, significantly better.
It decreases our risk, we believe.
Somebody's always have to, but, and decreases the risk.
I would like to see that. Seriously, I would like to see what you're...
This will come to us for a decision, but the, the question is how you all, it's, it's a, it's a, I'm gonna call it a moral question, if you'll allow me to. Do we individually and as a board feel morally, ethically, that we want to keep these uses separate, we want to keep the facilities separate by so much space? Then that's the direction we need to move in at the planning commission. But if this board, which has four new members on it, isn't so married to these spacing requirements, then the planning commission has a little bit more flexibility to build things, to design things, as we look at solving some of these problems.
I don't have a problem with adjusting these, I'm just one vote, but I don't have a problem with you reviewing this and adjusting them. In addition to that, I've been involved in numerous overlays, okay? And that may be the way to address this. So that's my, that's my stance on that.
That's helpful, Joe, thank you.
I'm trying to figure out the overlay issue, which I think is probably a very attractive issue to use for planning, in trying to figure out where things are at. I understand that years have passed, but man, that can happen on everything. Here's anything that we can't do that we wouldn't say that four years have passed, and now it's time to go back and redo it.
So we, we have, our, our motto kind of has been, what's in here would be in the overlay district. What's decreasing the amount of available parcels for business is the daycares and the schools.
Sensitive uses.
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same 12 to 14, I can't remember what the number is, 12 to 14 parcels. What was in here in 2018 would be in the overlay district. What's decreasing the amount of available spaces for use is the restrictions for daycares and schools.
So your daycare and school could be less than 1,000 feet? Could be 500?
No.
No.
Okay.
Because it still says... This still says...
This says you can't have them within a thousand feet.
No, I understand that, but the overlay, are you saying this language will stay the same?
Yes.
You would just create what they're looking at, not changing the language that you brought to us.
No, that is what I'm asking you to think about.
Change it.
Are you married to these seven-ish items in here? Or, as Joe just indicated, he has some softening around the ability to...
That's what I'm saying.
...change these things?
That's, that's exactly what I said.
So I want to see what they come up with.
I, that, I, I would be really interested in seeing what an overlay would look like with these 14 parcels. If this... No, this would stay the same, if I'm understanding what you're saying. She said, "This would stay the same," and that's what I was asking.
No, we have the ability to change it. What she is telling you is where, where things stand today. What I am asking you to consider is tomorrow. Will this board, is this board interested and open to changing the ingredients for Miles to bake the cake of the overlay district?
That's exactly what I said. So the, all right, let me try this one more time. Instead of 1,000 feet in an overlay, you could have 500, or you could have 1,500. The overlay determines the size.
No.
No.
That's what I'm asking.
This did...
So the purpose of an overlay is...
It puts us in stronger legal footing. It creates, it creates more...
12 to 14 parcels, would these parcel numbers are the parcels?
No, I, I get that, but I'm also...
It creates more clarity.
Understanding exactly what you're saying. Okay.
So...
So as an introduction, no, I think there's, there's a lot more study coming.
No, no.
No, no, no.
I'm asking your opinion.
My opinion, you want my opinion?
I am, yes.
Leave it alone.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, do you want to, I would love to see your overlay.
No, Joe said he is open to change.
I'm open to change.
Thank you.
I'm open to change.
You don't have to be on the record, Steve.
I was set up to speak into the microphone.
There you go.
I'm open to discussion, but keep in mind, the, uh, even the planning commission needs to know this, that it ends here.
Yeah.
I mean, you could very well come back with an accurate, solid plan, Miles, but I mean, the bottom line is, you could have got four votes against you, and it could, it might not work.
That's why I'm asking the question, because if all of us on the board was like, "It's these things,"
I get that.
"We don't want to bring something forward that's not this."
And I appreciate their hard work in what, in looking at this, and I believe that there's, I think I pointed, when I can look at a planning document and pick out, then, if the alternatives aren't exactly right, that tells me that we could improve on it.
Absolutely.
It needs to happen. As far as the 1,000 feet goes, I, I kind of chuckled with that, because another board member told me that one, it's not here, that, that they did that, he was on the planning commission, said they did that because of what I said in the board meeting.
Oh, you're the one.
I, I, that's fine, I own that, I don't care. Oh, doesn't matter to me. The worst, I'm gonna give you my personal opinion, and my personal opinion doesn't match what happens oftentimes up here. You do what's best for the community and best for the township. My personal opinion is, is when I roll up to the stop sign, or get off the highway, and the first thing I see is street pot shops on the corner, or whatever it is, you know, cannabis, whatever you want to call it, SkyMint, whatever you want to call it, I don't care. I, it, it doesn't give me an appealing look for the community, and that's my, my issue I have with it. I think that there's places that them things could be blended in better, where it's not right out front, and right in the rain, there. I'm not afraid to speak what I feel, but that, that's my personal opinion about it. And every community you go to, you gotta admit this, if you travel around at all in Michigan, and you travel around, you see that in a lot of communities, and I think that people didn't do a very good, I think they got caught short-handed, and they didn't do a very good job of planning. I think we've done an excellent job here of planning. I realize we're dinosaurs, but I think we've done an excellent job here of planning, and I think that what you're doing is even that much better, by, by bringing this to us and, and reviewing it. I'm not, I don't know how I vote on it. I, I, I don't, and you, in the end, some breakback, you tell me what it is, that's what your job is, but ain't my job. That, that, that's the way I look at it. My job is to vote on, I got to put her to vote on, wait things, I, I get to vote on a few things, I guess that's about what all my job is.
You took my turn.
So, so, that's how I feel about it. I think go, go for it.
That's really helpful, Steve.
If it's less liability, then it's good for the township.
Yeah.
That's the question.
That's, that's the bottom line right there.
Thank you, everyone, for the conversation. I want to direct your attention to page four, before we move on from this issue. I believe this will be a much quicker conversation. Uh, for some reason, uh, when la, the last board, the last term of the board, uh, made a decision on, on this ordinance, they decided, letter F, that we would not allow marijuana secure transporter permits. To me, that is illogical. We are allowing the sale, the grow, the testing, all of the other things around the marijuana business, but for some reason, not a trucky, trucking facility to be within the township. So it's my intention to ask the planning commission to rethink that, if we could allow one or more. I don't know why we would, uh, want to prevent trucking companies. But again, want to get your pulse on that. If you all had, and especially those that were here when this decision was made, a strong, passionate, you know, "Here's why we decided we don't want the, the shipping facilities in the township," I'd be really, I'd love to hear that. Otherwise, uh, what I'm gonna ask the planning commission to do is consider increasing that from zero.
What?
More than zero, and I think the planning commission can wrestle with that.
Okay. I don't remember the history on that. It's not, it's not coming to me readily, unless there was a police objection, um, why, why we didn't allow it. I don't remember it being a big topic of discussion.
Because technically, trucks will still come in to grow facilities to move the product elsewhere.
Just like...
Just we're saying that that trucking headquarters can't be in our township. So it, it's an odd, again, I don't mean to be disrespectful to the previous board, I just don't fully understand the decision that was made there, and perhaps it was an error.
Well, no, you have a truck coming in from Victor Township, or from Holly.
Be like a Brink's truck, or a bank, or...
Right.
That's probably why it was zero. You just can't be in Bass Township, but that just means you can't be in Bass Township, water Township, or somewhere else. I would say that's what the zero...
Yeah, but we were wondering why potentially was it zero?
For that reason.
What reason?
Because if, if you have a trucker that lives in Victor Township, and he trucks through, he can truck through, but it doesn't say he can't live here.
It's not about living, it's about the headquarters of the facility.
It's about a business being, a trucking business.
Yeah, so like, these semi trucks wouldn't be like, or Brink's trucks wouldn't be parked at someone's house overnight, it would be at a facility.
Okay.
You have the terminal right down the road from it.
I don't know the trucker lingo. I know.
Joe?
Is there any strong feeling on this board that there's, there's a reason we want to keep the trucking facilities out of the township? Again, this will come back to us, this is not a final decision by any means, but if there's not, then we can discuss that at the planning commission. I, again, just don't want to waste their time. All right, I appreciate that conversation, obviously this will come back...
What was your answer?
...to us. It sounded like nobody objected, so I'm gonna move on.
The only statement I have to make is part of what Steve said, with regards to the community and where they're at. Does anyone have, Miles, maybe you have it, or somebody else may have, what was the figure of the election for Bass Township?
There was a survey conducted, and it was in mid-60s of percent of people within the township that approved.
That's support.
Yeah.
The 2018 vote was overwhelming in the township, yes.
That's what I thought, but I don't know the, because that's something that has to be considered, that the board has to be looking at. It's not just a personal idea, which is what you said. Sometimes you disagree, but you go ahead and vote yes. I'm not sure, but that's, that too has to be taken into account, so that's what I've needed to know. Thank you. Thank you.
We can get you that figure too, Marie. And Miles has it in his office.
My vote was overwhelming, I just didn't know.
I pulled it for Miles a couple of months ago, so he has it readily available.
Here's everything, buddy. All right, we got now.
Where'd you go, Joe?
So now you'll go to the planning commission and then they'll come back to us, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
He said, we got so divorced, and we act really lost.
I think, I think we're doing broadband.
I think we are doing broadband, which is what my tiny writing said, so.
Okay.
Yes.
For your information, I forwarded to you on April 27th, a scheduled local unit broadband meeting that's being held at Clinton County at the courthouse on May 18th at six o'clock PM. The meeting is supposed to include an update on Clinton County broadband efforts, which I know Adam Stacy and Dwight Washington have both spoken to us about, with the specific focus of bringing quality, affordable internet service to county residents. So it seems that the county is looking to apply for funding and is currently working with potential private sector partners, which, if you look at the packet of information that I included to you, there is a funding strategy, and there is a list of private partners they're looking at. It's on page 12 of that document, there looks like there's like eight of them, seven or eight of them, that they're working with. And they feel like they're in a strong position to be successful if they can secure the commitments of ARPA funds from local districts, which we're included in. So we have been placed as Bath Township in a proposed service area east with Victor Township and Ovid Township, so any, any funding that is put up by any of these three townships would be pooled together, and we would apply for funding together. And they are estimating an approximate bill cost of $12.6 million for servicing all of those three townships. And there is a breakdown on page 10, that talks about homes without fiber service, homes without any service, and then population at the poverty line, and what that area consists of. And again, that's on page 10. So, they, the county, excuse me, has requested to know the amount of local, local ARPA funds committed to this effort by the end of the month. And, and I, in my opinion, don't think we're anywhere close to being able to, we, we haven't even had that discussion here.
You don't have the money to do that either.
And we don't, we have about half of the money right now, about $600,000 of it.
We don't have half of it.
Yeah.
Half of it's not here.
Yeah, so.
Don't, is it a dollar amount?
It's like 1.3 million, but we've only gotten 600,000 of it approximately.
Yes, we do, there's special accounts.
Yeah, please tell us.
All of the money is not here.
No, I think you're saying the same thing. I think you're, you're saying the same thing. Half of it's here, all of it's not here. But we, but we, as, as a, you as a board have not had a discussion about where you would like to spend those funds. But the county is expecting us to have an answer for them by the end of the month, and I just don't realistically think that that's going to happen. So, go ahead.
Question on that.
Sure.
Since, since the redrawing of the districts. And since Bath Township is no longer going to be in the county commissioner district with Victor, with, you can follow him, they're going to be all by themselves, so we're going to have a different county commissioner, so, and our county commissioners are going to run against one another. And, and if he was to lose, the one that's, Adam Stacy, who's spearheading this, and we're going to be in with, does that mean that our stuff is going to go with, with Victor? The new one's going to be Victor, Ovid, Green Bush, and part Essex, that's the new district. So, so does that, does that mean, is that's going to change in the way of the money, where we're going to go with this money, and who's going to be spearheading this and watching over our money up there at the county, since we don't seem to have too many county commissioners to show up here?
I can't, I can't tell you that.
Not that I'm saying that for a reason, but I'm a little concerned about that.
All I can tell you is they put us in with, at this time, we are in with Victor and Ovid.
And they're probably the most, I wish Jason would speak to this, but they're probably the most disadvantaged, socially disadvantaged people when it comes to broadband internet up in the area, and all, anything going on with fire corrodes, and it just gets worse farther along. But I just, I, I really don't, I don't know how they get to ask you for the money and secure that money and, and, and tell them what's going to go on.
It hasn't been a while.
They don't even know what's going to go on up there.
That's true.
Yeah.
When did ARPA first come out?
When did we get our first payment, or?
No, our first payment. When, when the program itself came out.
Twenty twenty.
So it's been here a long time.
Yeah.
And this is where Adam keeps talking about, and he said it repeatedly, that they're taking it slow. This is what they're doing. Now, now they decide.
By the end of the month.
So we're, but, but again, my, my question would be for us, this has been here a long time. Why now? I mean, we've, we've had, for, how long have we had our task force, or our an-hoc, not task force?
Oh.
That's been a year.
A year, that would be correct.
And so whatever they've been doing, why all of a sudden? Because you listed in here, which is a really good thing. You talk about task force, you talk about public sector, which they've all, they've been, that's why I wish Jason would be right, Jason would be here, he can answer this. So it isn't like this is coming to us overnight. So why haven't we been planning, I mean, our, see, that's what I don't understand. It's not because I don't like it, it's because I really don't understand.
Yeah, and you do why.
We've been going a year to look at this, and we've never wanted to be with the county. We've always wanted to be independent of that. Why are we even addressing the issue of appointing yourself and Jason to be with a group that we never really wanted to be with?
What I, what I, what I was asking for is if all seven board members and myself, which is very possible, show up to the county. I didn't want everyone speaking with a di, with a different voice.
Oh, no, I was there, I don't speak.
Yeah, yeah, and so, and so what I was saying was, yes, so that's what I was saying was, is that I wanted us to speak, and it didn't have to be me, I knew he was, he's been, he's done very well with task force. I only recommended that because I want us to speak with one voice, and if we say, we haven't discussed it yet, we'll get back to you after June 6th, or after our June meetings, or July meetings. I think they need to understand where, where we are at.
Okay, so you, your thought is that?
And tell them, we can't commit to you yet. We, we're.
They can't take that from Jason. They have to have it from, because he represents the township, is that what that's? I mean, I'm trying to figure this out.
I just, no matter when we have that conversation, whoever says to them, we are not going to participate, or we're going to participate for this amount of money, or they have to, they have to hear that from somebody with, that's been either chosen by the board or
They did choose Adam, I mean, that was the whole, or Adam. Jason, we did choose them.
Yeah, but that's for the, that's for the local task force. He's not representing us at the county on this broadband effort. He's representing the local task force on what's happening here at home.
So you're, so you're saying that Clinton County has included us without our permission?
They've included everyone in Clinton County, and they've broken us into areas, that's what the school report is, yeah.
They did, Adam Smitty did that. He did, he did a really good job when I was there, on this whole issue of the broadband and how they did it.
Yeah.
But he also clarified the point that there are some who don't want to be involved.
Don't want to participate.
But they have to divide it up in order for them to understand.
So they've divided us up.
So.
And they want to know if we want to play.
They physically didn't know. They don't, they've known, I think Jason has done a good job of letting them know that we're independent of that, and Adam has known that. When he was here, he'll give you reports.
We're in a district, and they want to know how much money we want to put forward.
And, and what I'm saying to that is, we already know we're not putting any money forward to them, because that's not what we wanted.
I don't think we do know that.
We haven't had that discussion.
We haven't talked about that at the board, we haven't voted on that.
At which point our local.
Wait a minute, you're saying that you're dismissing, oh, wait, hang on a second.
Go ahead.
Okay, sure, I'm understanding this. What you're saying is, we have a task force that we had for broadband, but it's not going to mean anything?
No, 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 no.
In no way was that what I was saying.
No.
Sure was, because.
No, it was not.
It was.
No, I get to say what I was saying, and that was not it.
Then say it again.
We as a board have not voted to divest ourselves from the county system.
But we voted for the task force.
Sure, but they're not mutually exclusive.
But the task force may come to you and make a recommendation that it's better that we participate with the county.
They may do that.
And that's what I'm saying, is that that discussion hasn't happened yet.
And I'm saying there's no reason for this until that happens.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. If all seven of you and myself go up there, we're all going to sit and listen, and we're not going to say we want to participate or not participate, we're going to say, we're going to go back and have more conversation.
Yeah, Jason is the one that took this. We gave it to him and said, here, this is what you are going to do.
Not at the county.
And this is what you're going to take, and he is, that's why he has public sector involved, which is a lobbying firm.
I understand that, but that's local. That's what's happening here in Bath. That's not what's happening at the county.
So what you're saying, and what you're, I'm understanding what you're saying is, everything that we've done locally has nothing to do with.
The county doesn't care what we've done locally. They, they have their own plan for this.
And so you're saying you can't tell them, no, we're doing this on our own?
You haven't made that decision, this board has not made that decision.
You could tell them that.
Well, that's what, that's what's been the whole, the whole thing, the task force has been, we're doing this on our own, that's all we've heard. Every time there's, every time there's some information, it has to do with what the survey has done.
The task force might say, we have a better opportunity for funding if we pair up with.
That's what I needed to hear, okay. It's, it's.
One thing you want to remember here is that these are three townships that you're talking about, Bath, Victor, and Ovid, are all unentitled townships. And as the unentitled townships go in Clinton County, we are the highest yielding of anybody in the ARPA business.
Correct.
Other than, of the three.
Of those three, yes, I listed, I listed the amounts.
That's correct, and, and my concern would be of what, how much of your ARPA money you want to take and contribute. And how much, I'd love to see a breakdown as far as what, what is actually Bath's share, as I would hate to see us getting involved with three other townships in this district, and then them not being as well funded as what we are, and seeing all the money from people that's supposed to be for Bath, over the, somebody's woogie board work, and Victor, and, and Ovid Townships. But I, I, I'm supportive, I think we need to have better broadband, especially more of a car road there. I, Ryan's right, we haven't decided yet, well, how are we going to do the, what we're going to do with one, we just commit to a local based one, that's exactly right.
What was the purpose of having a task force?
So we, so we could study it.
So we've studied it.
They had a very, yeah, they had a very good group of people who was very involved in that, who did a very good job of looking into that.
And the planning commission was involved and said, this was our an-hoc, this is what we're going to do, and everything that we've been hearing has been an independent voice. When I was up there, Jason had said it eloquently, was his term, I hope you spoke eloquently, and I wrote back, said, I'm not speaking anywhere. This is your baby, not mine. This is his thing.
It's not his thing, it's our thing, and I'm not sure what the resistance is to having a voice at the table in the county and a voice at the table in the township. We can do two things at once.
I cer, well, I hope so, that we can chew and walk. I hope that's true. All I'm saying is, I'm not understanding why it has to be our superintendent, who we're saying has to be along with the chair or the creator of the task force.
Because she's our chief administrative officer. I don't understand the resistance to allowing Karen to lead.
It's not necessarily, well, yeah, there's a resistance, it's resistance to the idea that we're saying that we're on a two-tier valve, so whatever happens locally is not.
That's not being said. They haven't even looked at, they haven't even looked at the data from our survey yet.
Well, of course not, because I didn't give it to them. But all I'm saying is that my understanding from the beginning was that that task force was what we were going to rely on.
They don't decide that. They don't, they can make a recommendation to this body.
Yes, they can, and this body has to decide whether they want it or not.
Right.
Has nothing to do with county.
Marie, it seems like maybe your understanding was one thing, and other folks understood different things, and I think that's okay, but I think we got to move forward. And I'm in support of our chief administrative officer and Jason being present at these meetings to represent us.
And I've never been talked to about it. I have been with Jason since information, so I do know the task force, I do understand. All I'm saying is then, if, if you're going to agree to this, and this is written somewhat in a, in a good way, in order to bring up our task force and public sector, then I would suggest that I be involved in what happens.
This whole board's going to be involved in what happens.
But this whole board, it's only, this part of the board never exists. This part, so if I'm going to be involved, what I'm saying is, I want information going, I don't want somebody filtering it. Does that make sense?
I shared information with you here, I mean, I didn't filter it.
That, I don't think, you want filtered information.
I trust Karen to, I trust Karen to give us honest information and to share with us honest information.
She said, that's absolutely correct.
And every single one of you can go to the meeting.
Then that's, so you'll let us know.
Let you know what?
When they're going to be meeting.
I did.
Nope.
I sent it to you on April 27th and told you that it's happening this Wednesday at the Clinton County broadband meeting.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine.
So on April 27th, I gave you like almost three weeks' notice when they sent this to me. So my sending, my forwarding their email to you was military?
I'm just saying, I, I would like to know what's going on, because when Adam gave his, his.
I sent you the email.
He gave him, his, his information was very good in what he did. So I'm assuming that it's going to be understood from our group, if that's what we're looking at, that there is no indication of involvement, there's no money.
There's no decision at this time.
Because ours has been here for a long time. We've had this information.
But you have not made a decision on how you're going to spend our money.
Because it's never been brought to the point of being able to say, broadband is a good thing, our sewer is a good thing, but they also tell you here that there are others, you have sewer, broadband, we have.
If you want to talk about those things, why don't we just put it on an agenda? I think that's a great thing to talk about, how we want to use the ARPA funds.
Oh, I think that should have been done a year ago.
Well, we didn't have the funds a year ago.
Of course not, but that doesn't mean you can't speculate and talk, they've been talking about it for a long time, others have been.
Fair enough, I mean, if you wanted to talk about it, why didn't you request to talk about it?
Excellent question.
Could you answer it? I mean, when I want something to be on the agenda, Marie, I tell Karen.
Of course you do, no, and that's, I understand that, and I, she hasn't turned me down.
So why didn't you ask for it to be on the agenda, if we should have talked about it a year ago?
We should have talked about it.
So why didn't you ask for it to be on the agenda? I feel like there's a secret here and I'm missing out on what it is. What, what happened?
No, there's no secret, there's never been a secret.
So why didn't you ask for it to be on the agenda?
I have not asked the ARPA money to be on the agenda because there isn't a reason at this time, or within the last year, that you wouldn't even have considered it.
All right, my understanding is you just said we should have talked about it a year ago.
Yeah, sure do. Absolutely right. Why didn't you bring it up? You're on the planning commission.
Because I don't agree with you, we shouldn't have talked about it a year ago.
Okay.
No, but it.
So what good would it be for me to bring it up?
Marie, you are a valued member of this team, you have the right to request an agenda item. If you believe we should be talking about something, you should request it, instead of a year later admonishing people that we haven't talked about something that you never request us to talk about.
You don't support it.
I, Marie, you want to bring up any discussion, I will talk about it. I'm not going to ask for it, it's not my issue. I'm not going to ask for it. It's not my issue. If you want to talk about anything, and you put it on the agenda, I will happily participate in the discussion.
Yes, you would. And you always have. That's absolutely correct. Is there anything else? Did you have your meeting booked?
Yeah, I support Karen representing us.
Okay, can we take a vote?
No, in that vote, yes.
We shut it off to action, so.
No, we put it on- oh, just for the introduction.
So there will be no one- my point is, we can all attend, but there will be no official statement from this group at all, because we haven't determined what we're doing or how we're moving forward.
They need it by the first review?
That's what they said, but we won't have an answer.
The dollar amounts is in there. If I'm all there from the meeting in Victor Township or whatnot, is that what Victor is-
That's the ARPA money they receive.
That's not what they're committing?
No, no. That's not a committing- a commitment of funding. It's what they receive from ARPA.
So who makes up- I hate to keep beating this stuff. You really need to ask us, but who makes up $12,000? There's a difference.
Well, they- apparently, they think they're going to have public and private partnerships, which means to me they're going to partner with a public entity-
Correct.
-that provides internet, and then they will apply for grant funds.
And the grant funds is part of the bigger national-
State and national.
That they're going to accomplish, that they can provide rural service to them.
There's 65 million in the infrastruc- or, excuse me, 65 billion in the infrastructure bill that has been earmarked to broadband. So the hope, I think, is that we would be eligible for some of that.
Yeah, maybe I'm not thinking correctly, but it'd be interesting to know the hominions of residents that all the two townships' money would reflect versus how it would reflect for us. We have information from our study that we did right. We said that's the way we needed to do that. That's why we did that. But that we have that information, so we can see that. So when you do bring this back, or you can say, tell us, compares to how many people we're getting out of our share of money. I'm not told it's funny. I think it's a great thing, but I think I want our share.
So any information received at the meeting on Wednesday will be brought back to James Evans.
So are you thinking 1.3 million, the whole?
Oh, we haven't got 1.3 million. Yep.
Of course not.
You actually get a little bit more in time. Your first payment came to you late, late of them for December, with the bank account. And then you had another flash of cash here in December. Last week in December was for about $2,700, and one extra, the line I have, the Dicky number of Dicky eight.
Okay.
That I had to report for the audit. So you do- you get your $683,057 on something like that. You've got a number you were- well, and so potentially you have another equal amount to the first shot of money you got coming, because we chose to do it in a two-part process, so we didn't have to have a single point audit at the end of the year. And that's why we did it that way. It was a lot of disavantage.
I'll ask my question again. I'm looking- because and that's- there's nobody holding you to anything. Nobody's feet to the fire. But are you looking at the 1.3, which is actually more than that, for the commitment?
No, I'm not the treasurer. I'm not the person that makes that decision. However, I do get to vote on that when they take it and they make a decision on that. As chief financial officer, I get to hang on to the money. Incidentally, the law has changed, folks, as well. We're not collecting interest on our money. We couldn't do that.
So what we're saying is, we don't owe the dollar amount. Is that correct?
I don't have a clue until you come back with your study. Everybody does everything that they're telling me that they're trying to do right now. And that's what it involves me in. I'm a little bit concerned about our district changes and the county commission planning. I hope our county doesn't change Bath's mental screen, but it all, but that doesn't have a whole- any of the things that happen.
Any of the things that happen.
Is the 65 billion dollars, Brian, is that committed, or is that just proposed?
It's committed in the infrastructure bill to that topic, but it hasn't been committed to communities yet.
Or me.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay. We're looking at 13B as a void. I've got this correct. Items for action, Park Lake, Park Lake Specialties. You're up again.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Did you skip one here?
I don't think so.
Some of the old industrial buildings specialties for the-
Yes. Yeah, because they amended it, so. My hands are scratching.
All right. I'll just introduce the project real quick, and then I'll get set up by these gentlemen who are introducing themselves. But you guys saw this development get introduced at the last board meeting. So it's five buildings, mixed-use residential, or, I'm sorry, multifamily residential, not mixed-use, just multifamily residential, which means apartments in this case, 40 units total. So why don't we have the developer here, and then here Alex come up? They can answer any specific questions you guys have. And I will find them a look to the TV in the meantime. Get over there.
That was a cool idea.
Yeah. I don't have that, unfortunately, to make a lot of slides. Thanks, Sarah.
All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Alex Phelan. I am the engineering consultant that is working on this project. So I'm hopeful that this will be a little more exciting, with things kind of go over this evening. This is a new residential development that we are proposing. So just a quick, little bit of background on what brought us here today. So Peter, myself, we've been working on a plan. We met with the township staff a little over five, six months ago, I believe it was. Kind of went back and forth with the staff, trying to kind of hammer out what we're thinking for this plan, and kind of came up with a couple layouts and worked with them to try and massage the layouts. And this is the plan that we had finalized with the staff and the planning commission over that five-month period that we have been working on. So I just can give you a brief overview of, you know, kind of what we have here. To orient yourself to this piece of paper, so this is kind of an enlargement of the overall plan. This is Park Lake Road here. This is the other housing development to the north of Park Lake. We're proposing two kind of separate areas here. On the west side of the development, there would be two buildings that would be located kind of in east-west orientation. And then on the inside, three buildings in north-south orientation, which is also what we have there. So let's just kind of blow up the area we're looking at. On the top here, this is the left side of the west side of the development. This is the two buildings here. This is going to have two-way flow going through here. We've got parking that'll be out front for all these. Each building actually has four garages on the west side. So there's a garage here, a garage here, a garage here, and a garage here that will be access from the outside. And then down here, kind of the same theme, two-way drive aisles here with access to parking out in front here and here. This east side is a little bit different, in that these buildings actually only have parking on the south side here. Inside, in the garage. There are the garages on the north side. So that does kind of form the issue for the plan here. We are planning to have a gazebo, so we've got a gazebo level plan out here. We worked with the planning commission. They were kind of looking for some site circulation. So we added a lot of sidewalk within the internal development. So there's sidewalk connectivity that would connect up to the trail up front on the west side. Same thing that is sidewalk internally, that would make connections to existing sidewalks as well. Another thing that we had been working on, we've been working with Miles on this, is we had talked about doing some more amenities for this. It was something I believe that you guys had brought up to Miles when he had introduced it. And so that's something that we went back and drew on the work. And kind of looked at what we could do to kind of tie the whole community together as a whole. And a couple of things that we came up with was a kind of a meandering path around the development that would connect the two new sides here, the east and west, to the existing stuff to the south. So we're showing this path here that kind of connects up here, and then another path that kind of connects up here. So it really provides for interconnectivity to the overall development as a whole. And then we looked at where we could put an area where it would bring the community together. So we had this area over here, kind of a green area. Nothing's there. So we started thinking about things that would, you know, allow the community to come together. And one of the thoughts that we had is, we'll do a fireplace. So we're showing a fireplace with some seating and perhaps a picnic table and grill. So if you wanted to bring your family out there, you've got a place to hang out, have a fire, you know, do a barbecue and sit down and have dinner, or what have you, or host events for, you know, your community and all that stuff. So that was what we came up with, to kind of tie the community together. So we're hopeful that that'll kind of appease what you were thinking when Miles first introduced the project.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to add to that, just from the planning perspective, I think this encourages pedestrian flow away from the road, which is important. Creates a little bit of safety.
The other thing that I brought with me here was our landscape plan. This is the east side of the development. This is the landscape plan. Now, mind you, I'm an engineer. I know little to nothing about plants. This was developed by my landscape architect, though. She does a wonderful job in following the ordinance. And I did have a discussion with her before I came here to, you know, just kind of get a good feel for what, in general, this landscape plan has. But all these circles you can see here, these are all planted trees. These are all different species of trees, kind of, you know, spread out throughout the community here. And a lot of them are native species, so they're not bad species. You're not a patch, whatever bad species it would be. I personally don't know what that is, but they are native species, you said. So hopefully that is a good thing. I did ask her to- well, we called her today. And if you guys had any questions for her, she would answer them, unfortunately for child cancer. So I will do the best I can to answer any questions you have on the landscape plan.
I actually have a question for Miles, and not you necessarily. I know the amount of green space was discussed at the last meeting. Miles, did you do any calculations at all at how much green space is?
Yeah, so we are currently at the planning commission looking at doing a lot coverage ordinance. And since this is one of the most recent developments, we wanted to use this as like a sum of a case study of a one-to-one ratio of lot coverage that included not only buildings, but parking lots as well, and drives, as all-encompassing lot coverage. So the figures, and these are rough figures, you know, give or take here, but the rough figures we got for this parcel that is to the left, or the west parcel, had to do that little sign in my head real quick, came out to be about 58% lot coverage, so about 42% open green space. And then we compared that with some of the other similar developments in the D Development District. And it seemed like that ratio was just so happened to be a very common ratio of about 60-40 split, so give or take 5% to 10% of lot coverage to green space. Now, obviously, this parcel here, the one to the east, is got a little bit more impervious surface. It was more of a 75-25 split. However, this parcel also butts up next to more green space area from the other development. So a little bit of give and take, you know. I don't know if the answer is that.
Thank you. Yes, it did.
Higher. There you go.
Miles, how come, or you- how come the sidewalk didn't go all the way around? You went partway and then stopped, and you got a- you're- I can't tell.
Are you talking about the brown lines you're looking at there?
No, the walk around the outside.
Which one?
The recreational.
Yeah, the recreational walk.
Yeah, why didn't it extend straight through here?
Yeah, and go on up to the- the walk around, instead of just walk up and back.
Sure. Well, so, and it may be hard to tell from the aerial here, but so the brown line is what we are proposing.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a walking path. And the hope there was really to, you know, connect into existing infrastructure. So there's existing sidewalk here that it ties into. It ties into existing stuff here. And then this one kind of does the same thing, where it loops around and ties back up in there. So there is sidewalk to, you know, get up to there.
Oh, okay.
You know, we- it's there, but we could certainly add more if, you know, if you think it is needed. We could go, you know, we could extend that a little bit, even further north to that other sidewalk, if you'd like. We had just thought, you know, from our internal planning, that whether you go here or you go all the way there, it gets you to the same spot.
So the brown is the new and the white is the existing?
That's correct. The white is from the aerial of what is there.
So they do connect. You just- you were looking at only the new?
Yeah, yeah. But again, I mean, we're talking, you know, kind of a nice meandering nature trail. We certainly can add more if you'd like. I mean, I don't think we're married to the idea. That's just what we internally-
It just seemed like they would have the circle so that everybody could walk around, instead of walking in through the park.
Right.
I'm kind of looking at this. I'm wondering, you've got Park Lake, which is at the bottom. That's Park Lake Road.
Yes.
Okay, so on the south.
Yeah.
Is there an opening? I'm not seeing it. Maybe it's being blocked. For cars to exit on Park Lake Road, they have to go all the way through the subdivision or the- there's two of them.
Sure, there's- it uses the existing drive. There are no new driveways in the Park Lake. So this development can go east to Hawks Ridge, out to Park Lake, or they can go west to Redtail, down to Park Lake.
That's okay.
Or this one can go east to Redtail, down to Park Lake.
That's what I was- because I couldn't- I wasn't seeing it where the Park Lake had actual entrances and exits.
Sure. There are existing ones.
And they worked- these developers worked with the planning commission on our request for ingress, egress concerns. They built out this drive, and the planning commission felt like that, you know, reduces traffic bundling up, increases safety onto Park Lake. So having two entrances is superior to one, basically, and two exits is-
And we did-
But it is on Park Lake.
On the Park Lake.
It is, yes. Yes, so we did partner with a traffic consultant to put together a study to study these two new connections that we're making to the existing driveways. And they did send that to your road commission, and your road commission did review and approve that. So we were able to show through a traffic study that the impact is very good.
Thank you.
I have a few questions about the fire pit, which I love, by the way. That's an addition, since it's come to the planning commission. Did the fire department sign off on that?
I do not believe we've had the fire marshal review this. However, we can have the fire marshal review as another additional condition to make prior to a building permitting issue. I think that's a great recommendation.
Yeah, because there's all sorts of like 25 or 50 feet from a structure, and you have to get permits to do recreational fires. So that's something to think about by management as well. And then I'm sure you all thought through this, but like, where are you getting the materials from that you're going to be burning, and who's going to be watching those things, and safety and things like that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, so that, I mean, the materials that are being burnt really would be on the guests that are using it. I don't think that the development would supply any kind of firewood. There's really no where for the store, but you can run down to the gas station, right? Pick up some bundles if you want to burn them. You know, if the fire department does have issue, or does take issue with fire, Marie, we can certainly propose something this evening that may be an appropriate substitution for you guys. Another thought that we had was maybe like a bags or the cornhole. You can get some concrete items that set out for that, and that would allow some play to happen, things like that.
I don't mean to dissuade you from the fire pit idea. In fact, I love it. I hope I know someone who lives there, so they can invite me over.
That would be our primaries, the fire pit.
Yeah.
I think it's a really good comment that you made, and, you know, I think it is something that we're going to have to manage to make sure, number one, it's safe, you know, before the fire marshal does review it and so forth. But I think we will take management for sure.
Yeah, and you'd want to make sure people aren't burning garbage, and there's all sorts of rules around, you know, smoke and smell and things, so. We'd like to think that everyone would use it in the way that it was intended, in positive ways, but we know that that's not always the case.
Maybe not for you, the gentleman in the back. The memorandum of understanding of the shared amenities, was that a problem for either party?
It's not a problem at all.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, so if I didn't say it during the intro, the gentlemen are here seeking action tonight for approval of their special use permit, with the use being?
It's, I believe staff has laid out their recommendation for, for conditions approval. We, as a development team, we have no issues with any of these. These are things that we have worked with Miles on and we are, are very receptive to these items. We might be able to take care of them.
And the only condition that was recommended tonight to be added to that list was that the fire marshal review the fire pit and any development standards that might come into play there prior to a building permit being issued.
Okay. Now, you're looking for a vote on this one? Yes, I would say. Okay, we have motion?
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Rosegram?
Yes.
Mr. Kennesaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of time.
Miles, thanks a lot. We appreciate it.
I did, I ordered it, didn't I? We all talked about the flag here. I wonder who's so patient. Does that per cent fourteen? Correct, that's it. For new business, items for introduction and discussion? Okay, Miles, I think we are up against.
All right, I'm trying to zoom to the site on question S just to give you guys a little bit better lay of the land. So this is a development. The use in question here is a warehouse for the purposes of commercial and office use. So, you know, office space, storing of goods. So this is the parcel in question. It's right next to a business that you guys all might be familiar with, which is Heritage Stone LLC. They make gravestones and stone engravements. And it's kind of sandwiched between that and then Consumers Energy has a transformer station, I think they're calling, substation in this area. So we'll go over to the set of plans. I know you guys have had a lot of items tonight, so I'll try to make it brief. But basically, this is just a white box. I mean, it's a four walls, white space in the middle warehouse. From, you know, the planning perspective, there's a heavy amount of warehouse uses in this area. It's almost becoming like a warehouse district. The market has kind of self-selected that. So we think this use is very harmonious with this district in this area of the township. And drainage has been, there's been a little bit of conversation around that just because even though it's just a white box, it's a large one at that, you know. So obviously, a good amount of impervious surface. You can see there's a proposed rain guard in here. So, again, one of the conditions that is recommended with this development is that the drain commission approve any set of construction plans submitted to the township prior to a building permit being issued. For development like this in many places, I wouldn't really think about drainage being such an issue. But you guys are, it's so wet here in Bath and there's just water everywhere and it's got to go somewhere. So it's something that we always take a close look at. And we got a super drain commission here that really knows what they're doing, so. They always give us a lot of agency feedback, probably them and the township engineer are tied. So, yeah, any questions on this one?
It's the same issue here as with the other. In other words, the building permit holds on the fact that they're complete.
Mm-hmm. That's how we kind of hold their feet to the fire. They got to give us what they want if they want to build them. All right.
That is my fraction, so.
All right, so, not, just introduction, not seeking action. The developer will be here at the next board meeting to answer any questions, just like what happened tonight. All right. Thank you, everyone.
If you have any questions, please feel free to email me and I can send you an information as you like.
Thank you, Miles. That is appreciated. All right. You amended the agenda. Can I have two more? Cancel, you mean, hold on to cancellation? You amended it?
No, I'll go for it. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay, I just want, we're already halfway through the year. Elections are coming up, so I just wanted to remind everybody, we didn't approve it when we approved the meetings at the beginning of the year. So I'm requesting that we cancel the board of trustee meetings on August 1st and August 7th. That's the night before the two, at the time, when we generally elections. And then I just brought up the Tuesday, July 5th, the, the day after the 4th of July. We usually cancel that, so I just brought that up at this point also. I'm not sure if we're going to have a quorum or who's going to be on vacation or. So these are just questions. We talked about at the beginning of the year of canceling the ones before the election so we can get the, the room all set up.
Could you repeat the August dates?
August 1st. The election is Tuesday, the 2nd, August 2nd.
For the August 1st meeting.
For the August 1st meeting.
And then the July?
November 7th, Monday night, the November 7th is the day before the November 8th election.
Okay.
My question with these have to do, was there any rescheduling? They're just literally canceling them.
I'm bringing it to your attention to cancel them.
That's what I'm asking. So there's nothing, so in July, we'll have just one, okay.
That's what we did in the past.
I'm just asking, that's what I want to know, so there's no rescheduling.
And July would be what, July?
July 5th. We, July 4th is the Monday, so we would have the meeting on July 5th. Do you still want to have a meeting? Will we have a quorum? Do we want to cancel it as we have did in years past? I don't know, you know, the items we do, the items so far in advance. Is there a lot of items we need to go over? I mean, this is not kind of a wedding.
The November meeting, we will, we'll be, we'll be in the budget again. And if it takes as long as last time, we're going to be really hurting.
I will be here on July 5th, happy to meet. But if there's no, nothing moving us on the agenda, always happy to cancel, but I am available.
Same here, that's two.
I will be on vacation that week.
I have to report it.
I will probably be not, won't be here on the 5th.
I don't want to part with. I don't, I have no idea what I'm doing.
According to fish, I mean.
What are you talking to me? My wife has told me where I was going.
Do we just want to vote?
As November goes, you're going to, you're going to have added dates, so.
Oh, yeah.
From August through November, so I mean, it's hard to say what you can do with that.
Do we just want to make a decision on the August and November ones with elections and save up July later?
I think you should close on July 5th. It's always been closed on July 5th. And there's very few people in working America that's probably going to be working on July 5th. Well, there'll be a few, but not a lot.
Our office will be open, it's just the work.
So that's what, what's our holiday going to be for, just for Mondays at all? Is this what it is?
Yes. Yeah, so the office will be open.
I, I think you should, I think that July 5th, for me, you could cancel, leave the deadlines to you.
You need a motion?
I think you need to do everything you can fast.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we skip the July 5th meeting, August 1st and, yeah, November 7th.
I'll support it.
Do you want August 1st and 2nd?
August 1st and November 7th.
7th.
I knew, but your election is the 2nd, you're, you don't.
You're closed the day before.
We don't meet that day.
I understand that.
So what is it? You want to cancel?
Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
We need to vote.
Oh, I know, yeah. Thought you had a question.
Oh, of course.
You said question, so go ahead.
No, no.
No questions?
I just. Go ahead.
See, I just agree with July 5th. Okay, everybody, yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosegram?
Yes.
Mr. Kennesaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The second item for action is B, Consumers Energy Foundation.
Thank you. This item was actually brought to my attention by Mark Crowder, the engineer from the county road commission. And the Consumers Energy Foundation is currently accepted, accepted letters of intent and the information that are included in those are contained in the two pages that are attached to my memo and are trying to award as much as $250,000 to two or more nonprofit municipalities for a $500,000 total, aiming to support economic development and improve the welfare of communities in Michigan with a particular focus on funding projects of long-term benefits. For your information, I included three. This is not an inclusive list. There could certainly be more. When Mark shared this list, shared this opportunity with me, he thought it was a way to offset the cost for Webster Road and St. Brown's School for $250,000. Over the course of time, people have recommended that we update the BAP Community Center and also James Cousins Memorial Park. There are certainly probably other good ideas at this table. So what I brought here tonight were those three ideas and with the hope that there would be discussion and possibly a movement for me to submit a letter of intent.
Those are the three funding projects you're going to have to work, any other?
And, and any other that are brought here tonight and agreed upon.
Can we include the Westwasser Road project, the fact that we committed to the food bank for its own tax dollars? And what that does?
We certainly could. We certainly could.
In fact, that does for the state of the hall, the hall, central Michigan area, because that is central Michigan food bank. Now, if they could.
Yeah, for seven counties, I think we service, so, yes, it's good.
It's an eight and a half, nine dollar building.
I put campus on that, dude.
I don't know. Sorry about, sorry about what they are in your house.
Oh, I doubt that's, that's a case I'll buy. You're lying.
I don't, I don't know. I collect them. I don't possess them.
Yeah, but that's the whole point. Okay. Any other thoughts? This is to authorize you to?
Submit a letter of intent.
Submit a letter of intent.
Yeah, or one of, one of these projects recommended by Mark is the Webster Road and St. Brown's School Court or Webster Court or to offset some of our costs.
So we're supposed to choose?
I think we should have all choices correct.
No, no. I would like you to pick one, but.
Just pick one?
Yeah, it's the same one.
So it's Webster Road and St. Brown's School, but that includes all of the Webster Court. And including the?
Clark down to the highway.
Clark down to the highway.
Yep.
We give all the bang for the?
Two hundred and fifty grand with the ceiling.
Food market and the food bank plus we get to the St. Brown's School plus we get to the.
You're getting that for $250,000?
Well, it offsets the amount you agree upon or could, could agree upon next meeting. To offset at next.
How quick does that?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Do they do, do they let you know?
They invite you to apply once you submit your letter of intent, I think, in June or July. It's a relatively quickly turnaround for application.
I know this foundation really well. I don't know that the sidewalk project is going to be what is going to be as enticing to them. Something like the memorial park, the pavilion, bathroom, something that is, you know, they often do like ribbon cuttings with this foundation and just picture like a ribbon cutting at a sidewalk versus a ribbon cutting at a pavilion. So that, I don't speak for them by any means, but I've worked with them for twenty years and so I, I think that's probably more competitive for what they're looking to fund.
I think the Webster Road would be a good, same, same issue. And you're right, the consumer has done that for years, having tried and watched it.
Well, Ryan did the talking for us for the senior center. He knew them people and I think we should go with him.
It's because we made them cookies.
Yes, we did. They were very good.
Want to add senior center in the same community? Oh, community center, okay, renovation.
I do think it makes a difference, the cookies.
It doesn't help you want iota. That gives you three out of four.
Yeah, cookies, the cookies are sweeter.
I do think we've looked at the BAP Community Center renovation and upgrade for several years. It, it's, that building has multiple uses. I mean, we use it as a rental facility, a voting precinct, community event space and, and for recreational programs. So I don't know if that's as good to that organization, but one idea that's come to light recently is having it upgraded to include a, a, I'm unclear if it's M-DAR or a USDA certified kitchen, but people feel like there's a need in this community for them to be able to produce products in a USDA certified kitchen and that could be utilized by the community as well as a rental.
Could we do what we want to do in that building for $250,000? That feels tight to me.
So we have to choose from the projects.
Yeah.
What about?
We bought it.
Oh, I think it'd be a great place. Well, I think Webster Road and the old corridor and the fact that we're, if we could get our stuff together here, we'd become a technology corridor. It'd be something of that nature. I'm not picking on the planning commission per se, but I would like to see that as a development. Myself, as a resident here, I'd like to see Webster Road be done that. And we're so close to all the amenities. We, we got the state of Michigan in here, Lansing, we got MSU and everything else. Frankly, I haven't sat in her office and she's heard to say that I think there ought to be a half of that center down here next door. That's what I think there ought to be. And that's, and that's what I think, I'd like to see that, that land. Takes a lot of money. But getting, getting people like consumers on board, you've got other people here in our community that are big, big ticket people. You've got BSN software across the street for continuously running space because they're getting nothing but huge, building more and more and more. You have the farmer's market who want to have a, a, a better place, an indoor facility where, I, I still think of my parents going to the, to the Lansing City Market years ago for phosphorus. They didn't remember that. But you used to vacuum and then you had indoor stuff during the winter and outdoor stuff during the summer. But that's what I would go down there. Technology and all that stuff. I'd like to see that for that kind of thing, that's what I'd like to see on board.
So isn't the develop, or is new development on Webster Road?
Sure.
Is that the 250,000?
Technology type of, and things that draw people, things that are for people, the food bank, it's something that you go and hand in hand with the food bank. If you already have that there as a drawing card, why not take and use it? You're not getting a lot of tax dollars out of it, it's well worth everything else and what I hear in the community and county for being there. It's talked about all the time, why not take advantage of that and build up that and make Webster Road the corridor that, make that, make that. And the guy that sold the land, I'll speak for him, he isn't here, I'm the only one who knows, I'll speak for him. That's like, that's like the way he did it, that way, he wanted it to be a drawing card for other types of quality places and businesses and things like that down there. Because that's what he wanted for the land. But he still does.
Is there something in there to remove those wires?
What wires?
I've been on that for years.
What wires?
Oh, down the, down the corridor.
Yeah, when you pull into Webster Road, it's the first thing you see is just your telephone.
Actually, it's, we're trying to, we have a, we have a project in that.
Once you take everything and try to put it underground.
Underground, yeah.
That's funny.
Yeah, well.
It's a, it's a, it's something Mark did for us when we started the Webster Road project. You opened up a case basically to say to any and all utility providers in this area that if you have it above ground, we'd like to work with you to put it below ground.
What's Mark say about this project since these road commission brought it, is it about roads?
Well, he felt like it would help us, I think it was more offset the cost, but also be able to get more from it.
My recommendation is to go with Cousins Park, I think we can pitch the project being within the $250,000 scope. I think we can make the argument of the historical significance, the 100th anniversary coming up. I think all of that makes for a really nice narrative and a grant that folks want to be part of. I think that is the, probably the best of what's been presented here through the lens of this foundation and the amount of money. But I couldn't agree more with everything that Steve said for other development and over time, I'm on board with that.
Does he have a motion to do this, is that what you just made?
I move to authorize the superintendent to submit a letter of intent to the Consumers Energy Foundation for a project supporting development in James Cousins Memorial Park of a pavilion with restrooms, a paved parking lot, and access stairs and ramp to park and lighting, whatever we can do within that scope that is $250,000.
I'll second that one, that was a lot easier than what you just said.
The only, the only problem I would have with that is talk to schools.
I would talk to the schools, I would not at all want to conflict with their plan. It's not my intention to compete with them, but only to add, and to, yeah, well, I understand that. But to add to the museum's plan for that area and not just, it's not in place of their plan, it's, it's in addition to.
Initially, it was just the pavilion, or the cupola, to take care of the cupola, that was the original.
But if their intent is still to pursue a building, I don't want to compete with their building, I think that both can exist if they're open to that.
It may make their plan more cost affordable if we've added some amenities to it already. Yes, it may.
So it's Ryan's, like Webster Road.
Go ahead, Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No. I like Webster Road. I would like Webster Road. I do like the idea of them coming down with the wires and then, that's huge, it's huge.
Murray?
Yes.
I'd like to put C, D, E, and F on hold till next meeting, so that, because we're down to six minutes.
I know, I was.
And that'll get you, that'll get you in what you wanted to put off for a week.
Well, as long as you do some study on it. Will you come back to us? Maybe by that time more stats can be found, that would be, that would be good. All right, I, you need to, since you've made that motion.
I just moved to lay it on the table.
Pardon? No, that's not.
Or just, we put it.
To save it till next week.
He said he moved to lay it on the table.
I know, gets used a lot. Thank you.
Okay, I move we postpone it for two weeks. Thank you.
Would you, would you like me to?
No, 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 let's just keep moving.
Let's not get into that, we got six minutes now.
I'll second that. Move forward.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. All right, superintendent report.
I will try to be very brief, hiring update, although I'm taking the second item first. We are currently hiring for a police officer, and we are also hiring for a dishwasher at the senior center. Those postings are both on our website and have been promoted in the fields they represent. And I believe we have some applicants already for the police position, one, he says. And I don't know that we have any yet for the dishwasher, but they still have, oh, two, and we still have time for those to be open. My second item was an update on Park Lake, I will let you, each of you have one. The highlights are the initiative with Goosebusters seems to be working very well. I am monitoring the situation to see if we need to extend our contract. But as of today, 12 nests, 54 eggs have been.
Neutralized.
Neutralized, thank you, and then on the second round, 11 additional eggs were neutralized. It looks like it is working, you will not know that for sure until the beach water testing begins. But for all intensive purposes, there do not appear to be geese hanging around the beach or the boat launch. We will be doing the aquatic nuisance treatment again this year for Park Lake. We have a permit that we've applied for, and Steve Hansen will be in touch with Dan Hayes and the Park Lake group to see what needs to be addressed. But we have a plan that we've been working from for several years that I hope is helping the property on Park Lake Road. We are still awaiting the Phase One environmental assessment, that should be here in the next week or two. The southern end of Webster Road, there, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
I didn't understand part of it, go ahead.
Part, which part?
Where it says, what part he to lay out the background and the history?
Oh, so, so we met with, Taylor and I met with the Clinton County Road Commission, both Doug Steffen and Mark Trotter, just to understand where we've been and where we are today. And why we don't wanna just yank the sign out of the yard, out of the side of the road. We would like to meet with the Drain Commission, the Clinton County Road Commission, and two property owners that this would affect at the end of that. To understand going forward how we can make this a successful and positive process for all involved. With marking of what is public area and what is not. The water control structure is actually on Park Lake, or excuse me, Drain Commission property. So we don't even own that property. So we need to better understand from all parties involved how we can make this possible, positive, and hopefully successful. So, no easements are currently needed for the phase that we're working on now. And I said next steps are after the completion of the environmental assessment. I will bring that, those results back to the board to make a decision on purchasing that property. And once we hold the meeting with the Drain Commission, the Road Commission, and the property owners, I will bring back a, an updated plan for the Board of Trustees to make a determination on expenditures of the money that was allocated in the fund for all the capital projects. Any other questions?
Who is him answering resources?
They actually are on And Drive. They do, if you recall, RLR properties, you allow for them to expand their business in the back, their parking and their. They actually do environmental assessments, and I didn't know that until after we did that project with them. So when I started looking for a business to work with, I found them.
In your backyard?
And they're local, so I worked with them.
All right. All right, is that it?
It is, thank you.
Public statements. Two.
Real quick.
All right.
Number one on the, on my agenda is do whatever you can to keep a hold of miles. Easy, invaluable, great, great asset, and excellent person. I just wanna say, as an individual, I'm on a lot of committees, as you may or may not know. But spending or applying for a grant to put amenities in a park that we don't own, we will never own. I still don't understand that, that whole thing about leasing Cousins Park. We don't own it, the school board owns it, the school board, I was in the meeting, they don't want to have any financial responsibility for the Cupola project. I'm on the museum committee, they're kind of leaning, I should say, we are kind of leaning toward a proper museum, if you will. And that's gonna be at least two million, several million. So there's gonna have to be some kind of endowment, because I certainly wouldn't think, wouldn't want the township to pay for it. The school district has said they are not paying for it, so it's gonna have to come from private funds, donations, GoFundMe, endowment. And then you're gonna have to have, you know, something to pay the bills every month, so. And whoever's gonna pay the salary of the person that's gonna be locking the doors every night and turning off the lights. So I guess what I'm saying is I don't think that's a good idea to put money into a parcel. And by all means, I am way for memorializing the child massacre, the school massacre site. But again, the township doesn't own it, so I don't think we should be putting money in that project. I will refresh your memory that the Consumers Energy Foundation has in the past funded non-motorized trail projects. And we have one that needs a lot of funds to go forward. And so, and that's ironically on the end of Webster Road, it just melts right into that thought. But I think that's something that we should look at, is utilizing that, that would be a super ideal prospect for that, that grant. If we could, if we could get that, is to further our project in the trail. Because they've done it before, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the ones over off Jolly Road, there's a big brass plaque that says Consumers Energy Foundation funded this, so. Anyway, I don't know if you even do that, but they did. And again, do whatever you can to keep miles. Thanks.
Thank you, Murray, appreciate it.
George Baker, I just wanted to discuss the road, you guys are talking about the road and stuff. Long story short, Judy brought up some stuff, and that does take time to work through them things, she did come to the meeting. And I just wanted to say that stuff does take time, I know the county is working on a lot of those things they've been working on before she even brought them up. I appreciate that, she came to the committee, to the, to the meeting, not only did she make her complaint, which is great because you find out things, but also she brought solution ideas, whether they can be implemented or not, at least ideas were brought forward besides our own committee. So I wanted to thank, thank her for that, but also remind residents that it takes time for stuff to happen, when they burn the roads, they bring all the debris up in, they look really bad, they are bad, they get wet, they're bad. But they do it a couple times and they end up being nicer than it was, because they're reclaiming gravel and stuff. And I know that they, the county provided a long, multi-year spreadsheet on some of the projects, which we're looking at some high dollars down the future, out in the future. And to have you guys, you know, just kind of keep that in mind as you think about the budgets through the next year or so. And that if we could, I don't know if this, where the funding comes from, but anything that we don't have to pull from the road budget, we could put towards future projects for next year. So like, for instance, we have a project next year at 425,000 in the Meadows. And we had 89,000 left over from this year, minus another 30 that will be pulled for the Drumhiller project. So that leaves us, but anything we can do that would go towards the next year's projects that they can get done, I don't know, that's getting down their low numbers. But anything we can do this year for next year is more financial savings for us down in the future, so. And then the Webster Road corridor is a primary road. So if, you know, if we could also not use our road committee funds for our primary projects would be wonderful. But it is a road project, so I just wanted to throw that stuff out there. And thank you guys for sticking through these long meetings, it's great, appreciate it.
Yes, the board, so for anybody else, because I have one, I'll quickly read it, because we're behind. But someone comment, this was coming from Meg Ritchie. She says, once again, I bring to your attention, the ADA, the OMA, Township Ordinance is not on the agenda. The Board of Trustees is accountable to the residents of the community. I think it's reasonable for the community to be accountable to the Board of Trustees regarding their own comments. I realize that some comments may seem rude or snarky. I do not see any way to censor these comments. Residents will have to take accountability for their own words. There are many, many times when I have regretted being drawn into the debate or posted something unfortunate on the internet. But I have to be responsible for that. Board of trustee members need to stop, delay these important actions with unnecessary concerns. Please put the ADA, OMA, Township Ordinance is back on the next agenda. Break it down in sections if you feel is appropriate. Sincerely, Meg Ritchie. And clerk has coffee, so she's good. All right, since we're done, and board member comments, if you wanna pass that up because of time, we will. And.
I move Roger.
I say unanimous consent, but you move.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.